Development Committee meeting of the HCSD Board of Trustees. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is meeting is going to be held in audiovisual conference hybrid format really. You've got some folks in the boardroom as well pursuant to Governor Abbott's suspension of open meetings laws. So we'll call the meeting to order and we'll go into the first item. Julio, would you like to present the update on the self-funded health insurance plan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Perez and Dr. Mayola, committee members. The first item on the agenda is a presentation by our consultant Lou Arias, and I see him is on there, on our self-funded plan. He is Gallagher Consultant Group. So we are in our fourth year of the self-funded plan. And Lou's going to go over, you know, the status of our self-funded plan, along with some other information about COVID and the cost that we've had in association with that. So we're going to have it over to Lou, and he's going to share documents, so I hope you can get that, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Cabasos. Seth, can everybody hear me okay and clear?
Yes.
Okay. I am thankful for having, thank you guys for having me present to you today. It's been a while since we've presented to the committee and gone over your financial monitor report. You guys have seen this report in the past. I'll go over it in detail today and answer any questions you might have. And so, as Mr. Cabasos mentioned, you guys are self-funded. So we're going to show what your claims, how your claims are running in comparison to what's actually budgeted. And when I say budgeted, that takes into consideration what the district is contributing towards each employee's coverage, plus any amount that the employees contribute if they buy up or add dependents to the plan. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and get started. And so this first slide here, this encompasses all plans altogether. And so if you look at, now this does start November because we did a long contract. If you recall, you guys are changing your effective date to 1-1 as opposed to November. So it's a 14-month contract. So next year, your actual FMRs will start in January. So this is showing claims through the month of January. February claims will be available around March the 20th. There's usually, there's a lag, about a 30-day lag, and it's the 20th of the following month. So we have claims through January. So this includes November, December, and January. Up top, you'll see the head count of the subscribers, the actual employees, and then below that is total members. That includes spouses and dependents. The next line is medical claims and pharmacy. Then you have some access fees. And then the amount over in the specific, those are amounts that is reimbursed back to the district from the stop loss. I'll go over that here in a minute. And then you have your total net claims payment. So we take all of that together and add in all your fixed costs. This is your admin fees, the amount that Blue Cross charges to administrate the plan. Here's the premium that you all pay for that, for your stop loss. And your stop-loss carrier is also Blue Cross Blue Shield. We add that up, total it all together, and you come up with a number. Then we add your employee contribution, the amount that the district contributes towards the plan for each member, and then the employees portion, and then come up with a total cost. So when we look at for November, you had a deficit of about $112,000. For December, you had a small deficit of $29,000. But in January, you did have a surplus of $226,000. If we go all the way to the right, you're currently running at a surplus of $83,000, almost $84,000. And so you did have a little bit of a deficit in November, December. I'll show you some information as to where that's coming from. But if you keep in mind, we talked about, this is a COVID, a COVID year and a COVID fall. You'll see on some other documents that I'll show you where COVID did spike quite a bit for the months of November, October, November, and December. And so it's not surprising to see these here. It looks like we are bouncing back in January. If we look at this pie here, 59% of your claims dollars is for medical spend, 26% is pharmacy, and then the rest would be these small slivers on your admin fees and the premium that you pay for stop loss. Now we move over to the actual plans individually. So this is your high plan. This is going to be the plan that employees would pick with a smaller deductible, and they pay a portion out of their pocket to be on this plan. You have a smaller amount of employees on this particular plan because it is a buy-up. It averages about 100, maybe 140, 135. So for January, you had 143 people, total members including dependents, just under 200. I'm not going to go through line by line. We did that on the first page, so we'll go straight down to the bottom. On your high plan, you had a deficit of $6,700, $32,000 in December, and just under $30,000, $28,000 in January. Not necessarily surprising, the reason folks would buy up to a high plan typically, doesn't mean that that's always what happens, is those are the folks that know they have a chronic condition or that know that they're going to use the plan. And so in their mind, it's worth paying or buying up to the plan because they know they're going to use it. So this plan does have some utilization. I wanted you to look at the year-to-date. We're at a deficit of $67,000 on year-to-date for this high plan. And if we look at this pie chart, 57% of it is medical. But the red part is what's a little surprising, and I have some information on this. That's your pharmacy spend. That's high for, 34% pharmacy is high. And so that tells me a couple of things. Folks that are using brand name or specialty drugs are on this particular plan, and those specialty drugs are probably more than likely the ones causing this uptick that accounts for a big chunk of that 34%, because 34% is high for pharmacy. And I've got some other data that we can go over so that we're not just leaving you hanging on that 34%. We go over to the low plan. This is the plan that doesn't cost the employees any money. The district provides it at no cost. So you've got a lot more folks on there. You've got 2,400 subscribers, about 3,600 total members. Again, I won't go through all these numbers because we went over it, but you had 700,000 in claims and another 274 in pharmacy. If we go down to the bottom here, the plan did start off in November at a deficit of 106,000, but slowly started to come back. And in January, you're at a surplus of 254,000. This plan is running at a $150,000 surplus, which is, it's good. Anytime you're above board or above, you know, paying less claims than what you're, than what's budgeted, that's always a good thing. And if we look at here, 60% of those plans are medical and only 25% are pharmacy. 25%, I'm starting to see that as the new norm. Maybe about three or four years ago, that was considered high. But because we've got all these new specialty drugs, and those are the drugs you see on TV all the time, you know, during the PGA or a lot of sporting events, those drugs are costly, and 25 kind of has become a little bit of the new norm. But we'll keep an eye on that. If we go to the high deductible health plan, if you recall, we added this plan maybe a year and a half ago. We only have one person on the plan, and so not surprising. Normally, folks that take this plan don't have hardly any medical conditions, and so that's why they would take this plan in exchange for, in this case, it's not really a lower premium because it's the same cost as the, as the low plan that the district provides. But it does give the opportunity for that member to set up a health savings account, and they could put money in that, in that account, and it's their money. It's not a use it or lose it provision. So if they don't use it in this plan year, it rolls over to the next plan year. And the idea is that eventually it ends up being equal to your deductible, so now you're covered at 100% towards that deductible. But this plan is running at a surplus of just a little over $1,000. 46% of it is medical claims, no pharmacy, and the rest of it is stop-loss premium. And it shows up as a bigger slice because it's a smaller, like I said, we only have one person on that plan. And so we'll continue to reevaluate the uses of this plan. But those are the numbers for the first three plans. Now let's dig into where you sit as an aggregate and your stop loss. So Harlingen CISD takes the risk on the first $250,000 on each employee. That's your self-formed, self-funded portion. After that, you purchase insurance, stop-loss insurance from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and you pay a premium for that. And then anything over and above that 250 that's eligible, Harlingen stops paying and Blue Cross starts reimbursing for those, for those claims. So we start tracking that $250,000. And then you have an aggregate coverage. So you might not have a bunch of people that hit the individual, but let's say you have a couple thousand people that are hovering close to, you know, 150, 200,000. You have coverage as an aggregate, your maximum target as well. If we look at November, December, and January, this gray bar is the maximum target. The blue bar is where you actually sit. You're running at about 75.6% of aggregate, which is good. Now keep in mind, we've only got three, we're only three months into the plan, but that's a great way to start. You don't want to see this go over 100%. If it's at 100, then you're at the break-even point at, at maximum. Okay? We want to see it stay below 100 because you guys are funding too expected. So we want to continue to see this gap here between the blue and the gray. You want to continue to see that trend. Here's where we start tracking on the individual. We start tracking anybody who starts hitting at $100,000 claims. Towards that 250, you have three that have already hit over $100,000. And here are their numbers for November, December, and January. So to date, they, between these three claimants, $370,000 has been paid out, which equates to about 9.4% of your total spend. So we need to continue to keep an eye on this. It's not a ton, it's only 9.4. But these high-cost claimants could continue on for some months depending on what those diagnosis and those, you know, plans of treatment end up being. But you've got three people. If we start looking at your large claimants, we kind of break it down. One's a dependent, the other two are subscribers. And there is somewhat of a diagnosis on there. It's not exact, but it gives you an idea. You remember the high plan that had 34% on the pharmacy? This person could potentially be that person on that high plan because their claims is all pharmacy, $114,000 in pharmacy. Pretty sure that's going to be a specialty drug. So if we start looking at your top 10 diagnosis by amounts paid, you've got some, some cancer, the number one is symptoms and signs, defined conditions factor, and influence health status. It's a little broad. There's a couple of diagnosis categories here that are broad, for example, like that one and number five, and even number six to some extent. I'm working with Blue Cross to see if we can narrow some of these down because they are a bit broad. But I have talked to Fitah over at Blue Cross because I was interested in, well, how, where would COVID fall into some of these high-cost claims? They could potentially fall into category number five. Doesn't mean that it is COVID, but they could potentially fall into that category. And they could also potentially fall into the, what is it here? Infectious and parasitic diseases. And so we don't know exactly where in here, but they do, they are captured in there. Like I said, I'm working with Blue Cross to see if we can come up with a little bit more definitive diagnosis codes in there. What you do want to look at, number two, is your cancers. Then you have diseases of the circulatory system, diseases of the digestive system. If you look at the percentage of the total plan costs, 14, 10, and 9, I'm pretty sure that those top three are probably in those first three categories. And then you have a pie down here that shows you the percentage of the total plan. Do I have any questions on the FMR in general? Because I do have some other reports that Mr. Cabasos is going to want me to go through. Anybody?
Why don't you keep going, and then we can, at the end, kind of go over the questions as well.
So Mr. Cabasos, would you like me to go into some of those COVID reports that were discussed earlier?
Yes, Lou, if you don't mind, please.
Yes, sir. So I'm going to show you, I did get these COVID reports from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Let me make sure that you can see my screen. Can you see that where it says COVID reporting?
Yes, we can, yes, we can.
Okay. I do want to give Fitah a pat on the back. She got me these reports. I asked for these with some short notice. She was able to get these out to me, so I want to thank her for providing these. The other thing I want to mention is we get COVID reports from all our carriers, and I will tell you that Blue Cross, to date, what I've seen so far has been providing the best reporting. It's real clear-cut and very easy to understand. But at the same time, a lot of this COVID reporting is a little bit difficult to follow. So this document is quite lengthy. I'm going to go through maybe a handful of slides that we selected that kind of give you the, a quick snapshot, if you will, or dashboard of Harlingen's COVID claims. So I'm going to go to, you know, this, these are the new codes that the CDC came out with that providers are start, to start to use when coding for COVID so that we can readily identify those. But it don't, they don't always come in that way because of all the underlying issues. But I wanted to look at slide number four, which is your dashboard. And so if you look at the top, on the left, you have a benchmark with a prevalence number for, you know, and I, and that is for Texas. You have the middle portion, which is another dashboard, which is specific to Harlingen. And then to the right, you have a national prevalence percentage. So let's look at Harlingen in the middle. So this started tracking COVID back in March or April. I believe it's April of 2020 because about a year ago today, leading into spring break, is when the COVID crisis really hit, and we started going into shelter in place, if you recall, where right where we started last year. And so that's when companies started tracking, even actuaries on our end, when we do cost projections, start tracking COVID around March or April. So this is April data to, to date, and you have a case count of 312. I want to make sure that you all understand that these are cases that have been captured or have been, or your members have accessed care via the health plan. You do have members that get treatment and, and testing and what have you outside of the health plan through any kind of community-type testing, which is set up by the state or even the federal government. So these numbers are only capture those that actually utilize the health plan. So there could be larger numbers, but we're talking about the health spend. So I just want to make sure that we differentiate that when we say case count of 312, that's what's gone through the health plan. So the total number of, of employees on there is 3,900. So with that case count, there was a 7.8% prevalence of COVID. If you look at the benchmark, that is higher, that is higher than the benchmark, and it is a little bit higher than the national prevalence. But it's not surprising because we all know, and you all know probably better than everybody, the Valley was considered one of the nation's hotspots, one of the state's hotspots for COVID. So it's not surprising that it does rank a little bit higher than the benchmark on the national level as well. If we stick to the middle part, which is specific to Harlingen, we had just a little over 1,000 members tested. And again, this doesn't count anybody that went outside the health plan as tested. And so that percentage tested positive was 25.5%. The percentage of members tested was 26.9. And if you break it down, it came down to about $96 per test. The total amount paid for testing only, not treatment, just testing, was $166,000. If you look at the treatment, that's where we get into these high-dollar claims, right? And so if we look at year-to-date paid total, it's $1.3 million or, or $4,800 per, per case. A big chunk of that came in as inpatient. Those are the folks that were severe enough, they ended up in the hospital, probably in ICU, and spent a number of days inpatient. And then you had some of those that were outpatient. Maybe they were in observation but not quite kept in, on an inpatient basis or had some testing done on outpatient basis. And then your professional services, those are stuff that were done inside the doctor's office, probably some testing and some minor treatment. But this shows the year-to-date paid on treatment. I want to go to the next slide, which is slide six. This kind of just gives you a graph of what COVID looked like. Here's what the potential was, but these are your confirmed number of cases. And look at, when you start getting into around August, September, December, you see this kind of really spike up. Now, the nice, the good thing is that when we looked at your FMR, you guys are still in a surplus. So you're fortunate in that even though this looks pretty scary, a steep spike, it's not as bad as some of your neighboring school districts in the Rio Grande Valley. I won't mention any names, but I've got some school districts that are coming out, you know, out the gate the first four to six months, and they're in a deficit of about $1 million. I mean, they really got hit hard, unfortunately. Unfortunately for Harlingen, even though this does look like a scary slope here, you guys are still managing to maintain a surplus, which is good. And you're starting to see that kind of come down. Now hopefully, that'll continue to come down as more people continue to get vaccinated. Hopefully, we will start to see a slowdown on the spread, and we will see these numbers go down. So the Harlingen Independent School District case count, again, was 312. You're seeing this from the other slides. Population 3,900, 7.8 prevalence. And then this is just repeating those benchmarks that you saw. Want to go to another slide? There's a lot of data on here, which is why I was saying that the Blue Cross has been really, really good in providing information. So let's talk about telemedicine. So if you recall, around this time last year, they shut down, and so a lot of providers weren't even seeing patients anymore. Or they were seeing patients, but they were seeing them done on a virtual basis. So telemedicine and virtual medicine became a big deal. And in some cases, you still have providers that are doing stuff virtually. Harlingen was doing stuff virtually on the telemedicine that they provide, and those services were expanded to include behavioral health. And just recently, Blue Cross asked all their self-funded clients, do you want to continue to offer and expand those services to behavioral health? So you have two snapshots here. One is for telemedicine visits, and the other one includes behavioral health. And so again, if you look at 2019, there wasn't that much, but 2020, when we were through COVID, it equated to about $6.37 per member per month. If we look at this blue line here, you can see where you have the spikes. And again, you see November and December, it looks like July was, was your more highly utilized for telemedicine. But behavioral health, you see this in the news a lot, but it's not really talked about that often, is, we talk about the treatment and the testing, but all the psychological ramifications that came with COVID and the shelter in place and people, you know, being locked in their house and not being able, unable to communicate, there were a lot, a lot of, a lot of need for behavioral health. And if you look at the telehealth behavioral services, I mean, that's, that's saying something. And this is just for telemedicine. A lot of folks went through the health plan as opposed to the, the telemedicine and, and received services, and they were also virtual. But I just think that this is interesting here, and I think the district will continue to expand the offering of behavioral services on the, on the telemedicine. Blue Cross is doing that with their fully insured book of business, so they're taking that, they're, they're taking that step. You're self-funded, so the decision was made to potentially allow this to continue. It doesn't mean that you're paying for stuff that you wouldn't momentarily pay for anyway. You're just paying for it and adding, as a, and added convenience for your employees to be able to do it telephonically if they still don't feel comfortable going out into the community and seeing the providers. Here's another quick little telemedicine utilization graph that gives another breakdown. Here's your telehealth vendor, and then your traditional providers. You do see your telehealth, again, this is a repeat, but you did see people that went to the health plan and, and chose that version of virtual health or, or a telemedicine through the health plan. And so even though we saw a big spike on the previous, using telehealth, folks are still going out into the community and using the health plan on, on tele, tele, excuse me, telemedicine. And if you look at the breakdown, again, mental health is a big piece of that, of those providers, the type of providers that are being stopped. And then, of course, you have your general practice, internal medicine, and pediatric. I'm going to move over to another report that gives an analysis on the COVID. And then we'll kind of slow things down because this is a lot of information. Did you see this screen? So this is an analysis, and again, this, this compares your confirmed COVID claims and, and some non-COVID claims to give you an idea of where your regular claims are coming in in comparison to your COVID claims. And so COVID confirmed claims versus non-COVID. So COVID-19, no, these are non-confirmed. Here's what you have for inpatient, number of claimants, or number of claimants and the number of claims outpatient in your professional services. We'll concentrate on the actual dollar amounts. So we had $391,000 non-COVID. But if you look at, yes, the ones that were confirmed to COVID, look at the, look at the number there in comparison to your non-COVID claims, 1.8, I'm sorry, 1.4. And if we add those all together, it's about 1.8 when we start to separate those. And I like the fact that you, because no one talks about what the non-COVID claims look like. If you recall, we did a COVID study for you around May, and we told you, the big fear was how is COVID going to impact the health plan? And we told you that it's probably going to be a little bit of a wash because you're going to have these COVID claims come in, but you're going to have a decrease in these non-COVID claims because of the shelter in place. Folks were either postponing or not doing these elective, non-essential types of procedures. And so that helped offset the cost. Here it is by indicators, by relationships, same drill. This goes by dependents. So 277,000. So here's non-COVID, here's COVID. Here's the spouses, 258,000, I'm sorry, 258 per claim. Here's the dollar amounts. Let's look at the dollar amounts. 740,000 versus 311,000. And then here's the actual subscribers. These are your employees. And if we look at the whole total paid as a total, you're looking at $12 million. So this again just keeps breaking you down additionally by, by relationship. So breaking out dependents, spouses, and subscribers. And obviously, the subscribers, which are your employees, are, are the ones that were paid, that Harlingen is paying the most claims on. I'll go through a few more slides on this, if I can get this to move.
Lou, I want to leave time for questions, and we've got another agenda item, so if you have any questions.
Okay, you know what? How about I stop? I'll go ahead and stop there because it kind of just continues to repeat itself. But does anybody have any questions on either the FMR or some of this COVID stuff?
So at a real high level, just, and I'd love to hear from committee members' input as well, at a real high level, I just kind of want to know, do we have a way of gauging our organization as a whole and our happiness with their, with their plans and the coverage? I know we have different options and things like that, and some are being better than others and things like that. And I know we have a surplus, and that that's great, that we only have three individuals that seem to be tracking towards exceeding their, you know, their, their limits. And as an aggregate, we seem to be doing pretty well. Is there a way to assess the happiness, if you will, or the people being content with the health insurance coverage? For example, do we have random surveys that we do? Do we have sort of a hotline where people call and complain? Or do we have a list, you know, do we have, maybe Julio, maybe this is a question for Julio, or Lou, I don't know, do you want to take a stab at that? Do we have a, a way to gauge that?
I think, you know, Rachel Cortez, she's our employee benefit coordinator, actual director, and, you know, she handles, you know, and fills the, the questions and complaints that we have from staff. So I know Rachel's on, online here. Rachel, do you recall any, any big issues with, with dissatisfaction to our plan for many of our employees?
Not anytime recently. If there's concerns about, about how the plan pays, Blue Cross does do a good job in explaining that information. I know there were some questions recently about the, about the pharmacy and some of the medications that were not covered, but that was due, due to a transition. If you all remember, we went from, we went to the 1-1-21 basic plan, and those members were sent information about the transitioning to their medications. I know one member, one or two members, they had the nadders changed, so they never, they never got the notice. But, you know, we got that cleared up with Express Scripts. But to say that I've had, let's say, 10 people call me and say, you know, this plan is horrible or it's not paying what they're supposed to, I have not.
Thank you, Rachel. That means a lot. Another question would be, do we have a way of assessing our effectiveness at getting our members and getting our subscribers to engage in wellness and prevention? Because we've been talked about, we've talked about this as a board many times, and trying to, to really get our, our, our district staff and our subscribers to really be, you know, be proactive about their health and, and focus more on the wellness and prevention versus wait till you get sick and go see the doctor. Do we have a way of assessing how effective that is? And how do we get the principal? And how do we get the principals involved in that if we don't already? And maybe this is a broader question. I know that actually, when Dr. Camalsus was superintendent, they actually did that from the senior team level. And I think Sandra Flynn had some great plans, and I know we've talked. Can you, maybe Julio and Rachel speak to that and how well we're doing, do you think, on that front?
So that's actually another line item on our agenda, Dr. Peters. Sandra will be giving us a wellness update.
Okay, good. So then I apologize, so we'll wait for that presentation. I just have one other question then for Lou.
Yes, sir.
And then I'd love to have the other committee members chime in. So it seems to me that the COVID, the pandemic, right, this was, if you can call it anything else, at least when you're looking at the finances and that kind of stuff, this was a stress test, right? A stress test to a health plan. It seems to, from what your comments are, it seems to, it seems to me that our district fared quite well with that stress test. Would you agree?
I would agree. Like I said, I'm working with three other districts in the valley. You guys by far are in a good place when we consider where you are to your aggregate because the big fear was, what is this going to do, especially when we start to see those spikes? And fortunately, you guys have fared extremely well. And a lot of that, let's be honest, is a lot of luck. But it's also, it's also that, you know, the employees are, you've got a lot of people that got tested, you've got a lot of people that went out and did what they needed to do. If you remove some of this COVID stuff, you guys would be, I don't want to say that the plan would be running even better because remember, a lot of these services have been canceled or postponed, and they may resurface next year. The person that needed to have maybe a knee replacement or what have you, may reschedule that in subsequent years.
Awesome. Anyone else have any questions, please, for Lou or for Julio regarding this matter? I want to hear from the other committee members, please.
So Dr. Peters, I do want to share one additional spreadsheet on our self-funded plan. If Lou can stop sharing and I can share, you know, the spreadsheet that we have. We do keep track of our revenues and expenditures in our self-funded plan on an annual basis. And again, this is the fourth year that we're self-funded. So in this spreadsheet, this is, you know, will our asset at the end of February, and we have about $1.1 million in our bank to cover any potential costs, you know, as of February. So over the course of the four years, we have pretty much been breaking even, and that's what we want to look at. We have averaged about a 3% increase, more or less, you know, over the four years. Prior to that, when we were fully funded, we were averaging about 10.7% increase per year over the previous three or four years. So, you know, there's, you know, we have been, since we went self-funded, we have probably saved some significant dollars as if we were fully funded. We've kept most of the benefits as well. So I think, you know, it was a good decision to go self-funded. It gives us more control of our plan, and we do keep track of those revenues and expenditures. So I just wanted to share that, that we're still in the back, if you will, you know, as of the end of February. And this accounts for all the rebates that we get as well from the pharmacy and the stop loss reimbursements as well.
And Julio, that's great to hear you say that. Can you also comment? Do you think that we're okay with our, what our aggregate level, what that kind of is in our $250,000 level where Blue Cross kicks in? Are you still okay with those levels?
Yeah, I think that number is appropriate. Some other school districts have had a little bit higher, maybe about 300,000. We feel comfortable with 250,000 this year now. As we move forward, we'll probably have another employee benefit committee meeting maybe in May, as we start to follow our budget and come up with a budget number for our health insurance. So I think the $250,000 is a good number. We actually went up from last year. Last year, we were at 225, Rachel, or 200,000? So we did go up a little bit. So I think the 250 is appropriate. We can probably even, you know, consider going up a little bit higher depending on how we do this year, just to save some costs.
Lou, do you have any comments on that?
Well, and actually, I'm now starting to recall when we, prior to the stop loss going to the board, that we did kind of dabble with an idea of bumping it up to 300,000. But the decision was made to keep it at 250, so I think you're in a good place. I think Mr. Camalsus is right. When we start looking at the budget, we can start looking at, we can look at the number of people around that time that are tracking that 100,000, where we look at that page and see, and compare that to the savings between premium on 250 and 300, and then make a decision. But we looked at that earlier, I think it was in the, I might have been in the fall.
It was.
October.
Well, if you guys could keep talking about that, that'd be great. And Lou, no disrespect, but if you can't convince Julio, you're going to have a hard time convincing anyone else, but...
Understood.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Julio, that last slide was very helpful. Thank you for that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, may I have one question, please?
Of course.
Thank you. Basic question. I'm curious, could you please explain the process from our having an employee who retires during an illness, which is a continuing illness, and was in our plan?
So I can try to answer that. Lou, you might want to chime in, but our employees are covered, you know, through the last day of the month when they retire through the health insurance that we have. They're eligible to purchase, you know, what we call COBRA insurance from the school district, you know, and that's required by federal laws that we have to offer a continuous health insurance at their cost. So the employees can continue to pay for the health insurance that they have, or, you know, let's say they retired through the state, they have the option to go with their health insurance. So there's always a continuation of coverage at the employee's decision whether they want to continue with us through COBRA, or they want to purchase the new insurance offered through retirement.
And it's a limited time, Mrs. Verrier. It's only for 18 months. It allows the employee who retired, if they go on COBRA, to look for other coverage. But like Mr. Camalsus said, they generally, if they're retiring and they're ill and they're retiring to TRS, they usually take TRS care, and that continues. And then that plan absorbs that cost for those services.
Yeah, so if they do that, just a good point, Rachel, is that when they do that and they go from the Harlingen Active Plan into the TRS or any other plan, for that matter, they would not be subjected to any kind of pre-existing where the other plan wouldn't continue to care.
Awesome, thank you. Before we move on, Julio, will we also be hearing from Lou at our May committee meeting as well?
Yes, Sandra, we probably have another update in May, so yeah, definitely from Lou and probably Tita, Blue Cross consultant as well. She's online as well.
And then last question, Julio. There's no action from this for tonight's meeting. Is there a way to possibly update the board? Maybe on the Friday administrative report, just as maybe the overall health of our plan and how we're tracking in terms of surplus and things like that? I just think the board, at least the rest of the board members that aren't here, would like to know at least your take on how we're doing with regards to our self-funded plan and the money we have in the bank and things like that. I think that's very important for the board to know, just a quick update.
Absolutely. We'll go on and include, you know, the spreadsheet that we presented tonight and also another spreadsheet that shows our increases in our health plan over the years, where we're fully insured and self-insured. And I'll try to put a dollar amount, you know, to try and see what the savings, you know, were in any given year since we started to do the self-funded. But yeah, we'll include something on Friday's update.
I think they appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
And if no one has any further questions, thank you, Lou, thank you, Julio and Rachel for that. We'll move into our next item, and hopefully Sandra Flynn will give us some great news with our district's wellness program update. So Sandra, take it away.
Hi, good evening. I really thought this meeting was in person, and I zipped over to the administration building. I'm like, whoa, I mean, I have pants that zip and the whole nine yards, and you have a guy in my office sitting in a chair. So I know that this meeting is usually hyper, just cramped with information and data and slides and all kinds of things. So I want to give you just a really, really quick overview of really some phenomenal work that's been done just these past few months since we've come back, even in light of teachers working from home and staff members going through a lot of issues really personally as we saw with the mental health piece. But our High Five Hero team has been established, our High Five to Thrive push for health and wellness in HCISD. That's kind of been a redesign of this whole wellness department. It's called High Five to Thrive: Transforming Health Through Resources, Inspiration, Vitality, and Education. We have a hashtag, HCISD is thriving. We have a logo, and we're pushing those things out district-wide as much as possible. We have a team of High Five Heroes. There's 35 of them. The way that those, that team was put together is really more campus-based and department and annex building and things like that. Every one minus a very, very small but very important group of employees has a High Five Hero attached to their department or campus. And at the end of this month, we're looking at having an in-person meeting with our High Five Heroes, and I think that will really help get the momentum moving even quicker. We redesigned the wellness website, so there are a lot of links on there, not just for benefits that staff can access, but just information that they might be interested in. And we're getting that information of interest from staff from our High Five Hero team. That's really one of their roles, is to be that liaison in what staff is looking for. We're, we have monthly topics. So in February, we supported the Heart Health Month. March is Nutrition Month, so there'll be some information forthcoming on nutrition. We've rolled out several things new this year, and some of them really weren't new, but people didn't know we had them. Access to a nutritionist through HEB. And in May, I'll have some data for you, how many employees have accessed the HEB nutritionist. When we pushed that information out, we had a pretty tremendous response. The Naturally Slim program has just gotten off the ground, and we had an overwhelming response of over 280 people that applied to be in the Naturally Slim program. We had budgeted for 150 employees to start that program, and that program is on, it started. We just don't have data yet, but we will have data by May, and I will give that to you. And we also have just a really great stream of information coming from Arosti, and they've been kind of meeting our needs of, you know, people are sitting all day and they're stiff or they have neck pain or back pain and stretches. And so we've hosted some virtual events, not only with HEB, Naturally Slim, and Arosti. And we also had our virtual wellness kickoff with over 600 employees that logged in that evening to get information that we thought was beneficial, and I think that they did as well. So things coming up on our docket is we're looking to unveil a wellness grant, is what we're calling it, and that would be funds that are provided, that are matched from a campus from the district and our department. And that, every campus will have to fill out an application to access those funds. And then we really want to know how HCISD is thriving and the benefit that they're getting from these things that we're pushing. So in May, I should have numbers and data and things like that, you know? We're really, we're really the cheerleaders of the best practice, and so that's what we're hoping to pass on. And it's more than just know your numbers and things like that, but it's inclusive of mental health and physical health and spiritual health. So we're really trying to cover all of those bases. It's a big task, but I think we're on the right track of getting this rolling. So that's my quick update.
Thank you, Sandra. So real quick, if you could maybe, I know you said more data in May, but we hope that that'll include, you know, our subscribers that haven't, you know, our staff that haven't been to the doctor in the last year or haven't done any screenings, whatever the recommendations are based on their age and everything else, inclusive of vaccinations. And now, of course, that includes COVID vaccinations. So I hope we're going to track that as well and quickly get our folks vaccinated, those that choose, I hope everyone chooses to get vaccinated, but I know we cannot require them, but hopefully those, everyone chooses to get vaccinated. The science is definitely there for that. And yeah, I'm curious to know about this LEE program, and maybe we can do friendly competitions between campuses and things like that. And that, you know, I know you guys have much better ideas, but, you know, I would, real curious to see the data when it comes back. But I really definitely want to make sure that folks are the ones that need to and the ones that just following the recommendations and the science that are getting their vaccinations, getting their health screenings, getting their cancer screenings, whatever's recommended based on their age and gender, et cetera. If we can track those things, that'd be great. And then promoting the wellness and exercise and the nutrition and, you know, diet and all this kind of stuff, and so...
For sure. I think it's a balance between employee benefits and the High Five Hero team. I mean, some of those things are protected, and we don't have access to that, but we certainly know what the best practices are, and we want to push that information and be that little salt brick that gets people thirsty to get out there and try something new and take that step to make a difference. And so that's really what we're trying to do. So we'll work with Rachel on some of that data that we don't have access to, but we can certainly push, be the cheerleaders to get people to get moving. And COVID should really be a call to action for that based on the numbers that we know of folks that have suffered from it.
Definitely agree, definitely agree, and that's a great, and that's a great point. But I know the right messaging is, when the right messaging and the right cheerleading, I think folks will make the right decision and then go see their doctor if it's their past due for something that's necessary and that kind of stuff. So awesome. Anyone have any questions or input or any ideas?
Dr. Peters, may I ask a question?
Please.
Sandra, thank you for that great presentation. Quick question on the nutritionists. Do we know how many people have gone through that or signed up? And are we tracking that?
So we can, that's a great question. We can get that data from HEB. They'll provide that data of how many people signed up for an appointment and then how many times they actually accessed it. So I can have that for you as well.
Do you know what we're tracking to see if this is successful? Are we tracking BMI? Are we tracking percent of fat?
You know, it really, it's a more of a personal move on staff to make that appointment with HEB. It is covered through our benefits. So if, I believe that HEB does, if those people continually go back, that is one of the metrics they use. Because everyone, when they meet with someone, I went through the process just to see how it was, if it was easy to sign up and accessible and user-friendly, and it really was. And so they said, if people come back through, we want to know. What is your goal? Are you diabetic? Do you need to lower your A1C? Are you overweight? What is your goal weight on things like that? So I'll see how much they can share with me on that.
And just from the school board perspective, you know, we want to be able to measure success. We're spending money on our program. How many of these people are successful? How do we measure success so that we can, we can say, okay, this is working? And then the question for the Naturally Slim program...
Jerry, can you please mute yourself, please?
It was my thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flueye. I love talking to you. I'll call you after, I'm just playing. For the Naturally Slim program, we had 280 applicants, and did the 280 applicants get access or only 150? And do we have to apply again if we open it up? How is that going?
That's a really great question. So we, in the benefits budget, we budgeted for 150 people to go through the program. It's a 12-week program with maintenance on the program covered within those fees. If someone does not access the lessons, then the district benefits plan does not get charged. So great question. Should someone start the program and not finish? They can re-up. If someone applied, like I applied and I did not get accepted, so next year I'm going to apply again and see what happens. So you can go through the program more than once, but they find with their data that's not necessary because of the follow-up that they provide. But every year, unless we decide to increase that number of people that are covered, we'll stay at 150. If we find that the data shows, my gosh, this really made an impact on our benefits in people's lives, that it's possible that we could increase that number. So to answer your question, folks can, if they did not get in this first round, they can apply next year, should we choose to offer it again, and apply again, so...
Yeah, I'm really excited to find out these numbers in both these situations because potentially we have... potentially we have a lot of proactive ability here to control our self-funded system. I think this is where the magic that Dr. Peters and I get excited about. So thank you for the feedback and looking forward for future information.
Absolutely.
I do want to say something on the telemedicine.
Please.
I get, what is a big pressure here on the telemedicine, now that our regular doctors here were doing that? That the people didn't have to pay that $35 bill, they were paying that $10 for that telemedicine for that. Really was a big plus to the employees actually going in and doing blood work and just going through the telemedicine and only paying that $10 instead of that $35 visit. That was a big plus.
That's awesome. Yeah, we're finding that, that, you know, it, you know, it's hard to no-show an appointment when it's a virtual visit, because they're going to get a hold of you somehow. And oftentimes, that keeps people on track with medications and their, and all the things they need to be doing to stay healthy. And at the end of the day, it keeps them out of the hospital, et cetera. So very, very, I think it's, it's, telemedicine is obviously here to stay. So Sandra, I will tell you, I'm sorry you didn't pass the background check for HEB, but maybe next time they roll out, they'll accept you for that program. But will you please also, inclusive of the quantitative data that Bobby was asking for, even qualitative, for example, testimonials? You know, people may not want to know, may not want to share their BMI before and after and things like that and their name, but even if they can do anonymous testimonials of how it's working, I think that would be awesome as well. So qualitative feedback is also welcome and can be very informative to how successful this program is.
I will absolutely work on that. Thank you.
Dr. Peters, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to say how excited I am and how grateful I am to see that once again HCISD has been so proactive in the midst of a crisis. You know, it's very difficult for the public, I believe, to keep up with everything that is going on, and they are under such enormous stress themselves physically and psychologically. But the fact that, that they can have confidence, our community can have confidence in this school district, to be constantly moving forward even in the depths of a crisis, should be very reassuring. And I commend you for your suggestion that we need to get out there and make this public, as you and Dr. Ben Yisar are requesting, in whatever capacity. This is very reassuring to me. This is very reassuring to me. And so I'm excited about what we're doing. I'm excited at the quality of the choices that Sandra, you and your committee are making. And I'm excited with, that the, you know, you're going to bring such specifics forward. And the more we can share with our community, our own family community and the district and the public, the better. Kudos once again to HCISD. Very progressive, very exciting. Thank you.
Awesome. Anybody else? Any questions or input? Things we did not cover? Things you would like to know more about? Maybe opportunities for next meeting to address or anything for Dr. Marilla that, and who would consider for the next committee meeting?
I don't know about consideration for others, Doc. I'll leave that to Julio and to y'all. But just a reflection, as we talk about our COVID numbers, you know, I think Lou's gone, but he said, you know, that, that it was luck that we weren't hit as hard by COVID. But I'm going to push back on him a little bit, because I, I don't think that was luck. I think that was all the work on this, of this group that's sitting here in our district because of their adherence to our COVID protocols. I think one of the things that we saw in general, as we've gone through this year, was not just lower numbers on COVID. We didn't see the impact from the flu. We didn't see as many colds. We didn't see as, as many of these things that we typically deal with. And I think that, that goes back to just our district's adherence to, to all of our safety protocols and people watching their health and so forth. And so that doesn't, you know, those numbers did not happen really by accident. They happened by all the work that everybody on, on the screen has, has invested in just the health and safety of our entire district.
I agree. I think his comment was coming more from the unpredictability of hospitalizations and who gets really sick and who doesn't sometimes. Some of that is also predictable, but some of that is not. I've had folks, young folks, become hospitalized, and you're like, you're like wondering, like scratching, how did that happen? That, that guy or gal looked pretty, pretty healthy to me, and now they're in a hospital for 15 days or two, a month or whatever. But I think you're absolutely right. When you have, when you educate people and you abide by safety precautions at work, and you get that messaging out over and over and over, that carries over into personal life, and then you get less infections as a result, which of course leads to less hospitalizations and that kind of stuff. And so it all has a, it all has a downstream effect and that kind of stuff. And so I agree with you. I don't think it was just luck, simply. Some of it is, but some of it's just by design and just through education and through following safety protocols and through, and through rapid testing and isolation and contact tracing and all the things we've been trying to do. So.
Well, I think there's going to be a lot of lessons learned from having gone through this process. Even as people were talking about the lifting of the mask requirement, there was a lot of people that were saying, you know, but as I reflect, just on how much just monitoring their own health, watching the, the typical things of washing your hands and watching your distance and just the things that we've been preaching for years, that people starting to see the impact of just those basic, those basic rules that, you know, everybody has been preaching for the longest time and really seeing that, that they can have an impact on, on just keeping yourself healthy just in general. So.
Yeah, for sure. I think you're going to see a lot of mask wearing going forward in medical facilities and during flu season, when people traveling. I think you're going to see a lot of that in the future, because we didn't have a flu season because of masks then. So people know the work. And so I think you're going to see them in hospitals going forward because of, you know, cuts down all the secondary infections, whether it's flu, CMV, pneumonia. And so I think they're probably not going away. And so it's just a lot, there's lots of things we can learn. And so hopefully, hopefully we don't have another pandemic. But, you know, I can't say that with a lot of confidence, because, you know, it's just, it's just the way, the way, the way these things work. There may be another one, but at least hopefully this informs our future decisions and other health infrastructure, we need to show up, what we do better. And I think there's lots of things we can, we can learn from this. So I agree. So, but this is great stuff, guys. Does anybody have anything else? If not, I think we're running a little bit late.
Julio, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So we predict for the upcoming school year, an increase in, as far as the employees' contributions for the upcoming school year? Can we look at that for next meeting? I know you have some numbers, but I was listening, connecting a little late. But being that many employees were not able to visit their doctors because of the pandemic and a lot of doctors are not practicing, those numbers may be skewed a little bit. So I'm wondering if we can forecast, maybe will there be more contributions on behalf of the employees for the next upcoming school year?
So yes, sir, that's an excellent question, and we're actually working on that. And we have a couple of months to come up with a good budget number for our health insurance cost. And so we're evaluating that. I don't want to give out any numbers right now. I think it's a little bit early, but I think by May, certainly no later than June, we'll have a good, a good number. Hopefully, you know, if there's an increase, it'll be a small increase, and maybe, you know, we can, if we feel that we can recommend a small increase, we'll absolutely do that. But, but we're still looking at those numbers.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome suggestion. Thank you. Anybody else before we adjourn? All right, Julio, are we done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your input and your participation. So with that, the committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
We are live. We're now, I call to order this public hearing of the Board of Trustees of Harlingen. Pursuant to the Governor Abbott's temporary suspension of open meetings laws, this will be an audio/video conference. And we are called to order. We do have a quorum. And we'll start with the public hearing of the 2019-2020 Texas Academic Performance Report by Ms. Dalia Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Marilla, trustees, administration, and audience. Presented for you today is our 2019-2020 Texas Academic Performance Report alongside our annual report. The TAPER report, which it's often referred to, is really presenting information on our student performance and staff information. And TA provides these to each school and district across the state. Much of the TAPER, much of the information you'll see today has been previously provided to the board during committee meetings through administrative updates. This public hearing simply formalizes the process in which to widely disseminate the annual report, as required by Texas Education Code, Chapter 39. And just to sample here, this is the annual report. We have this lovely three-ring binder of all the information contained. So this presentation is really just a high-level overview of what's contained in the report. So accountability to the community is centered around the vision, mission, and goals of the district. Alongside that are campus improvement plans, the district and the campus improvement plans. These are adopted in the fall by the board. And the information that's provided in this district and campus improvement plans are really centered around the data, much of which is contained in the TAPER report. As well, we have our strategic plan, which provides systemic approach to addressing the needs of our students and providing all the opportunities for them each year. So Texas Education Code requires each district to publish an annual report, and each district must hold a public hearing within 90 calendar days of receiving the report. Typically, the TAPER report is released by TA in late fall, and that brings us to our presentation today. Within two weeks of today's public hearing, we will widely disseminate the report, including posting it on our district website, along with disseminating these binders to each campus across the district and each department. And these binders are really in an effort to accommodate members of the community who do not have internet access. They're welcome to request, to see the report at any of their campuses. So it'll be readily, readily available in the front office or in their library. So the annual report contains a few topics, which you see there on the slide, and contains the, the TAPER report, contains some financial information, information about accreditation as a district, performance objectives, information on violent and criminal incidences, as well as the performance of our students in higher education. So our TAPER report, again, provided by the Texas Education Agency, is really comprised of two main elements. It is provided by PMS, our Public Education Information Management System, and every school, district, and the state provides information and uploads information to the state periodically throughout the year, as well as student assessment data. TA has made a lot of strides in publishing the TAPER report in several ways, one of which is the PDF version, which is the paper copy. But since then, over the past two years, they've really enhanced and made a robust online data system reporting that you can find simply by going on the TA website and accessing their, their TAPER website. So TA is able to upload data as it becomes available. So it's a really neat website that they've created. This is the front page of our Texas Academic Report for our Harlingen School District. You'll see their accountability rating for 2020 was coded as a not rated, declared state of disaster due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's what was coded for every district and campus across the state. And then our special education determination status indicates needs intervention. And our special education director, Mr. Daniel Garza, is currently addressing the needs intervention, intervention through our results-driven accountability system. So when we talk about 2020 accountability and what's included in the TAPER report, this is what the community will see. This is what campuses see when they go to the TA website and look at our accountability ratings. So in the past, during 2019, on this site, you would see traditionally the campuses alongside their domain ratings and an overall rating for each of their campus. For 2020, it will show just as is on the screen, indicating that all districts and schools were not rated in 2020 due to COVID-19. Consequently, no distinction designations relative to star would be shown. So in our report, also includes information, again, we talked about star. In the absence of star last spring, we're going to see on the report 2018 and 2019 star data. We are in the middle of, of beginning our state assessment this spring, but please note on the TAPER report, because of the absence of that, you do see two historical years there for 2018 and 2019. The attendance rates are there, dropout rates, graduation rates. We do have information on college career readiness information. There's a whole section on student and staff information, as well as program and budget information located on the report. This is just a little quick snapshot of what's in the report. For our district, you'll see the total students for 1920, or 18,346. And then you get to see some percentages alongside the region one and the state in that respect for the economically disadvantaged, a few of the special populations there, and then by program, information down at the bottom. Historically, over the past few years, we've pretty much remained consistent in our percent in each of these areas. But you'll get to see this for, again, for each campus and for each district in our report. Part of our PMS submission also includes reporting financial data to the state. And as such, with the report on TAPER and our annual report, we are submitting information in terms of the financial data and expenditures. TA is very transparent about the financial implications when it comes to school budgets. So these are available on the TA website, and of course, on our website, on our annual report, for, again, for every district and state. It does capture information in terms of revenue, expenditures, disbursements, tax rates, and fund balances are notated in the report. Alongside also included is our accreditation status. So in order for a district or campus charter to be considered a public school, it must be accredited. And to, in order to be accredited, it falls under two particular elements, one of which is the accountability rating, and the other is our first rating, our Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And you'll see their accountability rating for 2019 records a B. We were a 92 during the 2019 accountability, and due to a certain provision, we were restricted to a B. When you look at our financial ratings and all the excellence that our district has done under the supervision of Julio Carazos, for 2019, our first rating was superior. So in addition to our students' performance, the fiscal management of our district remains very sound with continued success in our first rating. So under those two indicators, account for our district's accreditation status. Districts must also adopt a student code of conduct, and each year, a student code of conduct is incorporated into our student handbooks. And that student code of conduct defines and outlines acceptable means of behavior and prohibits certain behaviors. We are to report violent and criminal incidents in our annual report. And you'll see there on the left side, it's a little tiny there, but you'll see the different description codes, along with the description of those behavior codes that TA deems as violent and criminal incidents. So for our district, we do show 12 offenses and incidences. There's asterisks there to mask some of the small numbers across the district, but this is a big decrease from the prior year where we were showing 35 last year. So you'll see this information as well in our annual report. Also included is information regarding the performance of our students when they enter post-secondary institutions. So we are required to include in our report the performance of our students one year after they graduate from high school. On this particular slide for our graduates from 2019, you'll see just the enrollment of our students in our district into post-secondary institutions. I do want to clarify that the numbers you see here of students enrolling in these universities and colleges across the state, that it is simply for the state of Texas. It does not recognize student enrollment outside of Texas. It is through the Texas Higher Educating Coordinating Board. And you'll see the majority of our students at the very top seem to enroll in our local and neighboring universities. At the bottom of this slide, you will see a not trackable and a not found. Just to clarify on the not trackable, these are students essentially that do not provide a social security number and are provided a state-issued ID number. And oftentimes, universities don't recognize those state-issued ID numbers. And oftentimes, universities don't recognize those state-issued ID numbers, and so those fall under the category of "not trackable," and those "not found" are those students that are not found in the university's enrollment files across the state. So this is a duplicate slide from the slide before, except we just kind of broke it down by high school, so that you're able to see the numbers and the institutions that they do enroll in, but by each of the individual high schools. So same information, just broken down by high school. So alongside with the enrollment, we do track the student's performance one year after they've enrolled and start looking at their GPA. And so you'll see at the very top of the slide, our students enrolled in Texas Public or Independent Higher Education for the full year 2019, and you'll see GPA, first year in public higher education in Texas. So you'll see our early college, Harlingen High, South School of Health, and our Keys Academy students there, whether they attended a four-year or two-year, as far as number counts, and then their performance in their GPA one full year into higher education. So when you look at, let's say, the GPAs for those students that are 3.0 or higher, you're probably looking at a little over 34% of our students achieving that particular performance level one year into their higher education career. So a lot of this information is also included in our annual report and in our binder. And so there's a lot of information that's located in the Texas Academic Performance Report, again, some of which is just required statutory data in the PDF version, but on the online version, it presents so much more information in terms of industry certifications, how many students graduated from a two-year, four-year university, and they're starting to expand a lot of the elements there when it comes to post-secondary institutions. So I'm really excited about some of the changes and data collection at the state level, that they're able to access information from all these different universities and colleges. So when you look at accessing the TAPER report, once again, you can find the TAPER report for any school and district across the state at the TA website. The link is there. We've also populated our HCISD website with every one of our campuses in terms of the TAPER report. And then, of course, this binder that I referenced earlier is typically located in the campus office area for those that wish to view it, that do not readily have access to the Internet, or their campus libraries. It also contains a glossary, because there's so many terminology in there that, you know, makes it a little quite clear when you look at the glossary, so it further defines a lot of the data elements included in the report. So once again, two weeks from today's public hearing, we'll disseminate the report and post a lot of the information, a lot of the topics that we discussed here, a high-level overview on our website. Again, please know that should you have any questions, you can feel free to email me or call me when it comes to some of the requirements in the TAPER report. But again, this is relative to our 2019-2020 Texas Academic Performance Report, and we'll have those copies available for the campuses starting tomorrow, and we'll start disseminating those across the district. So I can entertain any questions at this time?
Thank you, Dani.
If I can just add one other thing. I did place in front of you this little official pocket edition, and so this official pocket edition essentially is a mini version of some of the main elements that we look at in this binder. So this is kind of a handy-dandy little guide for you to reference and keep in your area, and you'll have to carry around a three-inch binder.
If I may, great presentation, wrapping so much information up into a small ball. Thank you. Larger point-of-view question, I mean, we realize that COVID has a lot to do with skewing these numbers, right? Tell me, can you expand on those felonies? When I see felonies or, you know, criminal acts, I get concerned. It's great that we're down from 12 to 35, but we didn't have classrooms, we didn't have many students in classes. Can you expand on that a little bit more?
So this, and let me head over to that slide. So this is based on the 2019-2020, so it is a collection of students and their possible offenses up until, up until through March, because March is when we, you know, sense the issue.
March of 2020.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Correct, yeah. So we do have a couple of months.
Okay, before COVID.
Yes, before COVID. So always through March.
We won't see skewing until next report, okay.
Correct, yes, exactly.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you, Dr. Muniz. This is also a public hearing, so I don't know if there's anybody in the audience, in the Zoom audience, that has questions, if anybody's tuning in. I'll give that opportunity now. Okay, if not, and if there's no more questions, we'll go ahead and adjourn this public hearing. Thank you, Dani.
Thank you.
Okay, we are live.
All right, we are live, and we will now, I will now call to order this regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees of Harlingen pursuant to Governor Abbott's temporary suspension. This will be an audio-video conference meeting. We do have a quorum, and we will get started with a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll move on to item number one, C, the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Shane Schrader.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Noyola, administration, and audience. Can y'all, can y'all hear me okay in the Zoom? Okay, great, all right. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by Haley Elizabeth Haug. Haley is a fifth-grade student at Dr. Rodriguez Elementary. Haley and her family moved to Harlingen from Victoria last year. Haley is the vice president of their student council. Haley says that she wanted to join student council to represent and be a voice for the student body and contribute to our school by organizing and participating in community service activities. This year, Haley and the rest of our student council officers organize a fundraiser for Polar Bears International to bring global awareness and inspire other students to join in the fight for the conservation of polar bears. Haley and their student council officers also see the value in hands-on learning, so they are creating small STEM kits to sell as a fundraiser. They wanted to ensure that, like our face-to-face students, our remote students have the opportunity to have fun creating at home. Haley was also invited to be a member of the Battle of the Books team last year. Haley's love for reading was sparked by her interest in becoming a member of the team. She has been a member of the team for two years. Haley loves to work with others to accomplish a goal and reach success, whether it's competing in Battle of the Books or being a leader of the student body. Haley's favorite subjects in school are, no surprise, reading and social studies. Haley says she enjoys reading because, quote, "When you're in a good book, it seems so real, like you could really be there." I agree with you, Haley. Her favorite genre is to read fantasy fiction and is currently reading the Wings of Fire series. She also enjoys learning about history and what people's lives were like in the past. When she's not deeply immersed in a good book, Haley loves to garden with her father. They recently started a vegetable garden together. Haley hopes that she can utilize her skills to help us replenish our gardens after the recent freeze. When she gets to high school, Haley wants to be able to earn enough credits to graduate with an associate's degree. Sounds like ECHS might be in her future. When she goes to college, Haley wants to study and attain a degree in criminal justice and eventually pursue a career in forensic science. Haley is a model student and always exemplifies great character and leadership skills. She is dynamic, passionate, and committed to everything she does. Haley is the daughter of Travis and Monica Haug. She has a brother who attends Texas State University and a sister who is a senior at Harlingen High School. Please help me welcome Haley Elizabeth Haug.
Whoever, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you so much for that. Very well done, and a very impressive resume.
Mr. President, might I just add to Haley that I too have read some of the Wings of Fire. My daughter Kennedy introduced me to them, and so I got a few more to go. I've got about 10 more to go, but it's a great series. I'm enjoying it.
Great job.
Great job, Haley.
Okay, we'll move on to one of the best parts of our meeting, is awards and recognitions. And we'll get started with item 2A, the recognition of Harlingen High School South senior for attending the state championship in swimming. Presenter, Mrs. Sandra Flynn.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Noyola. I'm so excited to be here, a year later, representing our aquatics programs and to do it in person, because our kids came to practice in person every day. So it's important. Camille should be on the screen, so if Camille can say hello, she'll be front and center. She's there. Don't be shy. Hello, Camille. I'm so proud of Camille. Camille's a senior at South. This year is her third trip to the state swim meet, and I've said before, when I've come on other years, to introduce Camille, that it takes a lot of steps for one swimmer to make it through, to qualify for a state swim meet and represent HCISD in Austin. And so, super proud of Camille. She's not just a state championship-level swimmer, but she's also involved in fine arts, varsity choir, she's advanced to TMEA, as well as advanced to state in choir. She's got a 4.3 overall grade point average, she's in the top of her class at South, and again, proud to say she's planning on attending Texas A&amp;M University in the fall. But Camille, I doubt that you're planning on studying, so can you let everyone know?
I got into the honors philosophy program at Texas A&amp;M, and it's just another stepping stone to my plan to be an attorney.
Sweet, nice, nice. So congratulations to Camille, and as well, congratulations to Coach Castaneda, who's also represented on the screen. Proud of our coaches and proud of our kids for coming to practice every day during this time and attending their honor society meetings, sitting on the floor in the gym in a wet swimsuit. They did their part, and so I'm proud to be here to recognize Camille and Coach Castaneda. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandra.
Mr. President.
Dr. Munniz?
I just wanted to, I've got my, I don't know if you can see it, I gotta get it close enough, my aquatics gator here, appropriate just for you and Coach Castaneda, great job. Yeah, you know, I only know enough about swimming to know that it is really, really hard, and you have to be really, really fit to do it well. And so we are so proud of you, and a three-year streak is amazing, so, but you're not, you know, like Coach Flynn said, right, it's not just swimming, you have so many talents. So we wish you the very, very best. Thanks for representing in so many areas.
Mr. President. Dr. Munniz? Congratulations. I brought the agri-ring, so you can see it right here, okay? That's what you're looking for, right? That's the next step. Let me get in the camera, there we go. Good, congratulations, that's all I gotta say. Good job, Camille. Thank you, Dr. Muniz. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. President, may I comment, please?
Yes, Ms. Furry, of course.
Hi, thank you so much. I would just like to say how wonderfully this ties in with the report that we, some of us were able to hear at our committee meeting prior to this meeting, where we were talking really about comprehensive health of the adults in our school district, and what can we do and what are the programs that we are initiating, and how really successful they are for bringing our adults into the recognition and practice of healthy habits for a lifetime. And is this not an exciting way to start? And so may I share a story? Dr. Muniz knows this story, perhaps a few guests of you do, and this is for our state winner who wants to go into medicine, because you can make such an extraordinary difference in the lives of all of your patients. My father began swimming due to some health injuries and swam 75 laps every single day into his 80s. And guess what? He lived to be almost 100 years old. And so all of those secondary, and I call them tertiary, blood vessels that were going so strong in his district, we credit those decades of swimming for bringing that about. So I'm just really very excited and very happy that Harlingen School District is once again standing on the forefront of all good things, and to have a student representing us as a state swimmer who wants to go to A&amp;M and become a physician, and no doubt will teach lots and lots and lots of other people how to live to be almost 100 years old in a healthy way. So congratulations, I'm so proud of you, sweetheart.
And I think, Madam, I think Ms. Furry, if I didn't, I think I heard correctly, she wants to be a philosophy major and become a lawyer, but is that not correct?
No, you are, but I totally get where she's coming from, both of my parents are physicians and my sister's a pharmacist, so I totally get it, and I totally support the movement.
Well, I guess I wanted to highlight that, because Ms. Furry will appreciate this, which is, I heard, otherwise 100% right on, but I will tell you this, I think you're doing the right thing, the right brain field of philosophy and the critical thinking and all that comes with that creativity, before you go into that left-brain field of becoming an attorney. Sometimes I think it's a left-brain field, in my opinion, but I really do feel that you're gonna be a great, great attorney and a great servant leader in the future. So we hope you come back to the valley when you're all said and done, so best luck to you.
May I say, Mr. Hyman, thank you so much, Dr. Perez, for being very gracious. Just for those who may not know, I had a little bit of surgery today, and undoubtedly, undoubtedly, I would like to claim that I'm still under the effects of anesthesia. But I'm thrilled, because, you know, we expect our doctors to be doing this on the front line. You can be a lawyer who's doing this on the front line. So thanks, Mel, for the lovely correction. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. And Dr. Perez, you took the words out of my mouth as far as, we hope you come back one day, Camille. I mean, we wish you all success, you know, and congratulations on, you know, your trips to state. It's not a small feat, even though, you know, the, even, you know, the first time's hard, getting there again's harder, and getting there a third time is even harder, you know, to stay, keep that consistency going at any level when it comes to athletics and sports. But, you know, your entire resume, it's very impressive, and we're very proud of you. And as Dr. Perez said, we hope you, you know, decide one day to come back and impact your community here in some way. And Coach Castaneda, congratulations to you too, man, because, you know, it's because of you that, you know, you and other coaches that are student athletes are able to be successful. So thank you.
Mr. Hyman, can I get a photo with the trustees? Everyone can look at their screen and smile, I'm gonna take a picture.
Sure.
All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Awesome, all right. Move on to item 2B, recognition of PTSA Students of the Month for March. Mrs. Brianna Valerius.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Noyola, administration, and audience. I want to echo Sandra's excitement about joining you all in person this evening. Tonight, I'll be recognizing our March PTSA Students of the Month, and they're joining us in Zoom to watch the video and be recognized. So students, if y'all want to turn on your cameras too, just wave hello. too, just wave hello.
Awesome.
There they are. The students you see on camera represent the PTSAs of Harlingen High School, Harlingen High School South, Early College High School, and Harlingen School of Health Professions. This video will be available to watch publicly on our YouTube page following this board meeting, and so we hope you all enjoy.
My name is Sarah Yudbina. I'm a senior, and I go to Harlingen High School. I'm a part of Student Council, Speech and Debate, Cardads, National Honor Society. And in Cardads, I'm second lieutenant, and in Student Council, I hold Chair of Pride and Patriotism. And outside of school, I'm in competitive dance, my worship team for church, and I also volunteer at the Humane Society. Some things I'm passionate about is dancing, helping with little kids, and just helping those in need. I plan on going to UTRGB, where I will major in psychology, get a minor in dance, so I can be a psychotherapist. I want to thank God and my family. My family has always pushed me to do my best, whether it's my girls or being kind to anybody. And I also want to thank a teacher, Miss Everly, because my junior year, which was my hardest year, she was always there for me and pushing me to be my best. And she would sit down and go over and work with me whenever I was in class, because I had activities.
My name is Cielo Perez, and I am a senior at Harlingen High School. I'm currently in my school's cheer team, NHS Student Council, and PTSA. And right now, I am my cheer team's treasurer. Ever since I can remember, I've enjoyed everything about music. I've always had this love for it. I really like to connect with the lyrics and to my own personal life and dissect and try to really understand what the artist is trying to say in the song. I've already committed to Texas State University, and I plan to study biology in the pre-dental track with hopes of pursuing my dream of becoming an orthodontist. I would really like to thank my family and all of my teachers I've had in the past for always pushing me to do my best and always believing me that I can do greater things than this.
My name is Ashley Young, and I'm a senior at Harlingen High School South. I am currently a member of the HCISD Senior Advisor Board, where I serve as president. I am South's senior class president. I am a member of Student Council, where I am the vice president, a member of PTSA, National Honor Society, and South's Win On Samba. I'm passionate about learning and helping others, reading and baking. I plan to attend the University of Texas at Austin, where I'll major in biology. I'm still not sure what I want to pursue as a career, but I'm leaning towards forensic science or becoming a biomedical sciences. I would like to thank all of my teachers, especially my math teacher, Mr. Rada, for always making class a fun place to go to and something I look forward to every day. And I would also like to thank my band directors, especially Mr. Dan Weaver, who for the past four years has always pushed and encouraged me to try harder and believe in me when I doubted myself. And I would lastly like to thank my mom, who has done everything to support me and has been my number one supporter. Gracias por todo lo que has por mí, por todos los sacrificios que has hecho todo este tiempo. I love you.
Hello, my name is David Cortez, and I am a senior at Harlingen High School South. I participate in varsity football, varsity track, and varsity baseball. And I'm also a member of NHS, PTSA, and FDRA. I'm the team captain in football, track, and I am the secretary of FDRA. I've really enjoyed varsity football. I've been doing that since I was a freshman in high school. So that's just one of the things I've really dedicated my whole career, high school career, to just because I've played that sport my whole life, and I've dedicated my life to playing that sport. So every time I got a chance to go out there, I really left it all out there. One of the main things that I'm most passionate about is helping others, and I love helping others in any possible way, whether that be on the football field, or in class, or on the track, or wherever that may be. I just love helping others. Whenever I have the opportunity to help someone else that is in need, I'm going to go out and help them to the best of my ability. As of right now, I'm either gonna be going to the University of Texas at Austin or Texas Christian University and be majoring in business finance. And once I get done with that, I plan on going to law school. One of the main people that I really want to thank is Mr. Rada. He's a great teacher. He's took, I've had him since my sophomore year in high school, and he's just helped me grow so much in my knowledge of mathematics, and I can't thank him enough for that. And not just that as well, he's been a great figure to me, as in, he's always been there for me and helped me with anything that I need, whether that be helping me with a letter of recommendation, or helping me putting stuff on my resume and certain things like that, and I can't thank him enough for that.
My name is Rebecca Torres. I'm a senior at Early College High School. I'm a part of PTSA Student Council, and I'm the captain for the HS for Christ. Well, I'm so passionate about a lot of things. I really enjoy helping others. And on my own time, I like to paint, to draw, and I like sewing. And I really like to make my friends laugh. That's one thing that I really enjoy. I like being around a lot of people and just looking over the top. So, I plan on either attending PTSA or the University of Houston, and get a buzz and greet all of you. And with that, I could do, I could kind of be a biologist or go and apply to that university. Of course, I want to thank my family, but most importantly, my parents for always supporting me and learning everything that I've learned.
My name is Anissa Lopez. I am currently a senior at Early College High School. I'm currently a member of Student Council, PTSA, LS for Christ, and Yearbook. Freshman through junior year, I was also involved in drama club. I'm currently in charge of the media ministry for my church, and I record and prepare the videos for YouTube that will be shared with our members who are not able to attend our in-person services. I'm passionate about pursuing my dreams and continuing my education. I'm also passionate about helping and uplifting others. I plan on attending the University of Houston and going into nursing. To be more precise, I'd like to become a prenatal nurse. I would like to thank God for helping me through my high school years and giving me the strength to keep going. I would also like to thank my school for giving me this opportunity to take total enrollment with UTRGB and get a head start on my college career. Last but not least, I would like to thank my parents for always supporting me and pushing me to do better for myself and my future. Without them, I wouldn't be the person I am today.
Hi, my name is Squaredog Aguilav. I'm a senior here at Harlingen School of Health Professions. I'm Spanish Club, and I trust in the early program. For Spanish Club, I currently hold the treasury position. For the early program, I'm currently a student studying for law doctor's license. Some things I'm passionate about is listening to classical music. I really like the instruments. I'm a drummer, so I like singing new things. I like learning new things. Currently, I'm trying to learn Turkish and Italian. And I like design, so I have a small business where I design at Harlingen. So, I currently have a few options over the early colleges. Currently thinking about UTRGB and BBDT Austin cat program.
My name is Verilla Padrón, and I'm a senior at the Harlingen School of Health Professions. I'm a student band, currently enrolled in our inner checks, and I'm the president of the red cross, the red cross club. And I used to be in Spanish Club, HOSA, and Rotary Club. I'm passionate about writing poems and painting. It's something that I've done ever since I was small, and it helps me when I'm stressed. At the moment, as of right now, I don't know where I'm going to school, but I am planning on, I am planning on studying psychology, and I hope to become a psychiatric physician. One person that I want to thank is Mrs. Sharp, because she was my psychology teacher, and she inspired me to learn more about it. And I also want to thank my family, because they have always been there to support me.
All right. Congratulations to our March PTSA Students of the Month. And you know we have some parents watching on our livestream right now, so I'd also like to congratulate them. I would also like to thank the Harlingen City Council PTSA for their partnership on this recognition. If I could have just the students and the board members have their cameras on for this part where we say their names. From Harlingen High School, we have Sarah Yudbina. If you can turn on your mics and say hi to when we say your name.
Dave, tell me to say my name.
Yeah, go for it, Sarah. All right, next we have, next we have Cielo Perez. Hello. From Harlingen High School South, we have Ashley Young.
Hi.
From Harlingen High School South, we have David Cortez. From Early College High School, we have Anissa Lopez.
Hi.
We have Rebecca Torres.
Hi.
From Harlingen School of Health Professions, we have Greta Aguilav.
Hello.
And we have Fabiola Padrón.
Hello.
And Sarah, if you want to say hi real quick, I know we didn't get a chance for it at the beginning.
Hi, sorry.
Awesome. Now, congratulations to you all. I'm gonna ask the board members if they'd like to say a few words, then we'll take a group screenshot photo of the school board members and the Students of the Month.
Dr. Rinegar?
Please, I just want to congratulate each and every one of you. You know, we, this is one of my favorite parts of our board meeting, is getting to meet all of you and to hear about your accomplishments and your plans and your dreams for the future. And it's, it's so inspiring. You really, each and every one of you already have shown your leadership, and you have so much to bring to the world, and your plans are so big and so important. And, you know, we just encourage you. HCISD is behind you all the way. We're, you know, we'll be cheering you on. We want you to come back and contribute here and make what's happening here even better. But you are already an inspiration. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Rinegar. Anybody else? Not, I also want to extend my congratulations to all of you all. And it's no coincidence that on the day after International Women's Day, seven of the eight Students of the Month are female. So, congratulations. Huh?
Just saying.
Just, yeah, just saying. You know, another thing I noticed was that in the age of audio and video meetings, you can be anywhere and tune in. And I believe Mr. Cortez is off, but I think he was at a baseball game. I think he was in the outfield, and he was zooming in into the meeting. So that was kind of cool. But, you know, congratulations to him, congratulations to you ladies on this, one of many accolades that you'll receive as you start wrapping up your senior year. It's just a few months away. And, you know, just want to congratulate you all, very proud of you. And to reiterate what Dr. Rinegar says, we hope you come back one day and give back to this community here. So, congratulations.
Mr. President, can I get a photo real quick?
Sure.
Sure. Great. Can I get all the other adults to turn off your video real quick, so I can get a photo of the kids? Okay, on the count of three. One, two, three. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Next, we'll move on to item three, approval of minutes. Item 3A is the February 9th, 2021 regular board meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval of minutes, pass to me.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Perez, a second by Dr. Rinegar. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 3B is the March 2nd, 2021 special board meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for approval as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rinegar and a second by Mr. Greg Powers. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4 is the principal's report for Ms. Adriana Arellano from Rodriguez Elementary School. Ms. Arellano, you're up.
Sorry, I'm here. Good evening. How is everybody?
I have a list of questions. Should I ask them now, or wait?
You can ask them now, but I may answer them in the presentation, but I'll be ready. So I'm gonna share my presentation with you. I hope this works. It always works the first time. Okay. Are we good there? Can everybody see?
Perfect.
Presentation. Okay, awesome. Well, once again, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Noriola and senior team. Thank you for having me back. It's good to be back again. I feel like I was here at this time last year as well, presenting on STEM. And so, I'm really excited to give you an update of what's been going on this year. So, I'll be kind of reviewing my notes here a little bit, but... So as you know, the STEM learning pathway and everything we do in the district is always aligned to our goals. And so, STEM focuses on creating new learning opportunities and enhancing the learning experiences of all of our students. So we always want to ask the question, why we're doing what we're doing? And so, why STEM? Why now? So I feel like it's our responsibility as educators to find new and innovative ways of teaching to ensure students are able to reach academic success. So, teaching STEM in the elementary grades opens the door for students to become the innovators and leaders of the future. So our why, which is our students, continues to guide the way for us through this transformation. So just wanted to share with you a little bit some statistics from the U.S. Department of Commerce, which highlights the advantages of a STEM education. And I want to read you this quote very quickly. According to Jenny Kroger, which is, who is with the Florida State University's College of Education, young children with a strong foundation in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics will go on to play an integral role in our nation's... will go on to play an integral role in our nation's global competitiveness and economic stability. So the future is in STEM jobs. However, I want to emphasize that STEM, a STEM education is more than just focusing on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. A STEM education encompasses problem solving with real-world application. The four Cs that we all know, collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking. Exploration and discovery across all the disciplines, all the content areas, and making career connections. So in year one, we had a lot of professional development. I feel like we really had to deepen our understanding of the concept of STEM teaching and learning. During this time, we received training from Discovery Education on instructional strategies, how to incorporate the four Cs, virtual field trips, exposing students to real-life events happening around the world. I think the most impact that we've seen in the past two years has come from STEM innovator coaching. Through personalized coaching, our STEM innovators were able to take their lessons a step further by embedding challenges for their students to design products, build and test those products that they created. Our STEM innovators have become an essential part of the process in that they are guiding other teachers in the school in this implementation as well. And a big part of that also is making career connections and everything we do beyond the STEM professional development of what we have done these past two years. So I had to add this and throw this in here because once we, we had, we came to spring break last year, we were not able to return. And that forced us into a new teaching and learning environment. So really, teachers, whether they were first-year teachers or veteran teachers, they really had to relearn all over again how to teach. Our greatest challenge this year has been maintaining that STEM culture, whatever we did in year one, and making sure that we were still able to do it in year two. But I do feel like we had to, our teachers had to learn how to create digital lessons on CSO, how to manage a classroom, navigate Zoom, just really learn about remote learning, how it was going to be implemented, also with, along with our face-to-face students. And then focusing on that social, emotional aspect in order to develop a relationship with our students, again, in this environment and while keeping true to the health and safety guidelines. So whether they were remote or we had them here face-to-face. So many, many challenges, but it didn't take long for our teachers to really brainstorm and develop that plan of action. So without them, we wouldn't be where we are today or right now with STEM learning. So in this year, year two, we've really taken our lessons and STEM to the next step. The engineering process, as you see here on this slide, has really been guiding our lesson planning since we returned from the holiday break. So again, once we kind of got our feet on the ground with this, this new year, you know, we really focused on the engineering process. And so you'll kind of see what it's about and we'll talk about it in the next slides. But the STEM instructional cycle is centered around a real-world problem. And that's what we're focusing on. So in order to follow this process, our teachers had to redesign their lessons. And what you'll see here is our, basically our lesson design. These are the, our components that we utilize in our weekly lessons to guide us every step of the way. And what we had to do is really figure out a flow to our lessons. And so my instructional coach, Mrs. Jimenez, created a STEM planning document for our teachers so that they could use as a guide every week in their lessons and their planning. But all of these components are an integral part of the engineering process. And so the planning doesn't, we can't put our plans into action without our PLCs. So our professional learning communities, teachers teaching each other, teaching teachers, has really played an integral part of this lesson planning process. Our teachers teach all subjects, however, they do share the planning. So having this time is essential to ensure that all teachers have a deep understanding of the curriculum and how to effectively deliver instruction to students in each of the subject areas. So I want to follow with some examples. So here are some examples of final plans in the various subject areas. So first of all, we always begin with our TEACs. We want to gain a real deep understanding of what we're teaching. And so we use our field guides from lead forward to do that. This is an example of first grade reading. And so I wanted to start with something in the lower grades. And also know that this is reading along with social studies. So we are putting into place that interdisciplinary component for our students. So this is reading with social studies. This is Martin Luther King lesson. And you'll also see this vertical alignment piece. And I don't know how clear you guys can see that. But what our first grade and all the teachers are doing in every grade level is looking at their TEAC, but also with the students have to know the previous year coming into their grade level and then what they'll need to know the next year. And so here's another example, because we're doing the same thing in all grade levels. And so here you'll see third grade and how they look at second grade and then what they will need to know in fourth grade. So all of this refinement, all of this process happened essentially during the first semester. Really coming into their own and figuring out a way in this, this new learning environment along with redesigning their lessons. So it was a lot of work for them. So come January, we focused on a school-wide STEM topic. And so when I say school-wide, that means every grade level was challenged to conduct research on a specific problem-driven question about polar bears. That was our topic. And so you heard in, in Haley's bio, how we talked about polar bears and Polar Bears International. And so they were to brainstorm solutions and design a product. And so this picture that you see here, I included it. This is actually a life-size polar bear when standing. So we really wanted to give students a real feel of what, what a polar bear really, the size of the polar bear actually is. And so some of our support staff helped create this for our students. So they really enjoyed taking pictures in front of the polar bear. So on the next slide here, you'll see some of their problem-driven questions. And I feel like these are very impressive because some of their hot topics that they touched on were their polar bear habitats, climate change, global warming, bringing awareness to the community and impact of the oil and gas business in the Arctic. So I wanted to highlight some of those questions so you guys could, could read what each grade level was studying. And you'll see that we start in kinder and through fifth grade as far as really doing a deep dive into the engineering process. But we do have pre-K, studying a little bit as well of polar bears. And so they're incorporating that into their lessons as well. So it all begins with research. So in these next slides, you'll see some more examples of how our teachers embedded the various components of the process of the lesson planning design into their lessons. So this is a kindergarten example of how teachers are utilizing CSO to create a polar bear research activity for students to work on throughout the week. And included is their problem-driven question. What can I do to help polar bears and their habitat? And so this is an activity that parents also have the opportunity to engage in with their children at home. What you'll see here in this slide is third grade conducting research. And this is an example of how they're doing that through experimentation to gather information for their problem-driven question. In this next slide here, you'll see also another example of that interdisciplinary component. So we're combining, combining reading and the study of biographies with social studies. This particular author here, Nicola Davies, she wrote the book Ice Bear. And you can see this here at the bottom. So students use the information in this book for their research. And so this is how teachers are incorporating informational text about polar bears into the content areas. And, but still while getting to know what a biography is. And so this is first grade, keeping that in mind. Also, what you see here at the bottom is that career connection. And that is a big component to the real world. And so on the next slide, I want to show you that this is the example. Once you click on that link, it takes our students to www.mynextmove.org. And this is a resource that was introduced to us by our Discovery Education representative. And we've used it in our STEM family nights last year. And we're now making sure that we use it in our lessons. And so there's a lot of career connections being made weekly regarding some of our, our STEM topics and as it relates to polar bears, for example, in this, in January's topic. And so you can see that this highlights zoologists and wildlife biologists for students. Also with Discovery Education, we love these virtual field trips. And so using their website as a resource for embedding this type of real-world application. Discovery Education has an entire channel dedicated to polar bears. And there's actually a page where you can go and click on it. And it's a live cam and kids can just watch polar bears and their behaviors as they're walking around in the Arctic. So it's really, really interesting for the kiddos to see. I also wanted to include this example because, as you know, the recent freeze, this was on the news about Sea Turtles, Inc., and everything they did to rescue sea turtles. So Discovery Education also stays very up to date with current events. So this was very relevant to actually our kinder students. And you'll see why on this next slide. So coming into February, our February topic was loving endangered species. And so again, our students and our teachers really loved the idea of a school-wide topic. So we were all having the same type of conversation. And this month was just an extension, or excuse me, in February, it was just an extension of animal studies. Students are researching the reasons why a species is endangered and trying to find solutions to aid in the conservation of these animals, just like they did with polar bears. And so every grade level was able to choose their own endangered species to research. So once again, as our teachers are planning lessons, these are more examples of how they're embedding the various components into their lessons into each subject areas. And so this is that interdisciplinary approach. We've got it in grammar. And again, this is something that is posted on CSO, so we're using that digital platform. This is a second grade example. And so you can see in the next slide that this is very rich with text. And so this is a grammar question, but we're including a lot of science, a lot of facts that they can add to their research as they try to solve their problem and add more to their problem-driven question. Another real-world application, again, looking at the, the sea turtles that we rescued from the freezing waters. So this is in line with kinders endangered species. And so it was something that they were able to use just recently. In fifth grade science, this is how we look at a real-world application and the effects, that changes to the ecosystem affect the endangered species and how deforestation is caused by humans. I wanted to include that just to preface this slide right here, which again touches on that real-world application and how we're using our resources, our online resources. This is from the World Wildlife Federation and Why Forests Matter. So there's text about that. And so in doing all of this, one thing we need to also consider as we get into third, fourth, and fifth is, well, how does this help us with STAR? And so this is something that we recently obtained information about. By the year 2024, the STAR assessment will be comprised of these interdisciplinary passages. And so this is an example of a fourth grade reading passage linked to science TEACs. However, in fourth grade, science is not tested. But as you can see here, that we're utilizing TEACs that are building from first grade, second grade, third grade, and on. And so we know that if, by doing so, we increase knowledge of the subject matter every year for our students, we're going to have higher levels of comprehension on the test. So by the time they get to fifth grade, they're going to be able to ace that science test. And so I feel like really, we're ahead of the game in, in doing this. And already, we've been doing the interdisciplinary component. We've been adding that for the past two years now. So piggybacking off of the previous slide right here, teachers are utilizing these facts, this research from several resources to create their own STAR-like question. So these are teacher-created. This isn't something they got out of a workbook. So this is really many long hours have been spent creating these lessons in every subject area. I'm really proud of their work. And this is the best part of all, opportunities for students to showcase their products. So what I want you to see here, as one of our remote students using an app called Flip, Flip a Clip to create a digital version or animation of his design, he then communicated or presented to the teacher and to the class for feedback at how he could maybe improve his design. So want to share this with you all.
So, Ms. Dasty, I made my project. It's an animation. And I looked at that, made that zoom. And I made that helicopter that sucked up the oil. As you can see in that animation, the helicopters sucking up the oil. And then make, um, allow this animation of the big wall in the next video.
In this video here, what you'll see is some of the improvements that he made to his design in collaboration with one of his partners, one of his students, his peers, and how he made some changes.
Okay, so this was the next video. You can see, well, I little, added a little bit of my ideas into it. So there's a tube, um, there's a tube right here throwing up in the, the wall. And then there's a tank on top of it. And then all the oil goes inside it. And then there's a tube that brings it up to the tank. And then the tank spits it out into right here. And also the tank can also hold the oil. And that's mostly what holds the oil. And it mostly just picks up the oil, if it picks up the water. It also has a little thing. So that pool right there would go up in that way. It would, it would go up and spill the water out back into the ocean. So that's how I have water. I added a little bit of my ideas into it. It'd soak up the wa, the oil.
And this is a third grade student. So in this next slide, you're going to see some of that brainstorming and design process. So students thought of ways to clean up an oil spill and prevent large amounts of oil from spreading so quickly into the ocean. Next example, so this also extends to kinder. And kinder being allowed to present what they learned about polar bears and their habitat. So they're learning those presentation skills. And you can see in the next picture where it says save the ocelots. Again, third grade, also getting really passionate. And this was a day that we had a campaign to save an endangered species. And this was during Texas Public Schools Week. And so they were superheroes that day. We are also trying to create global awareness. So here we invited Polar Bears International for a school-wide Zoom presentation to speak to our students about the work their organization does in polar bear conservation. So students were given the opportunity to ask questions and get live responses from a real scientist. So it was a very, much so a big deal for our kiddos. Third grade even decided after this to adopt a polar bear. And that's their certificate, one third grade class. And so it really started a movement. And that's how student council got involved with wanting to raise funds for Polar Bears International. So I feel like we're really, we are creating passion in our students by giving them purpose. Just another example of now that we're studying endangered species in just the same way, our grade levels are reaching out to other organizations for, for that. And so this is one grade level studying ocelots. And parental involvement, we know parental involvement is extremely important. So in our highlight video, you're going to see and get some feedback of how this has impacted parents at home and the, and the family dynamic. And so we also get back, I want to, hope to get back next year to hosting our family STEM nights, as you'll see in the picture on the right. And finally, sustaining a STEM culture. And so how do we continue this work? How do we continue to support what's being done in the classroom? And so we've included our special programs. Our librarian, Mrs. Downer, is doing some work. We're extending their polar bear research in every grade level. And so she meets with all the classes in every grade level and helping them extend their research and really develop those skills. And the library PE is also assisting us as well, reinforcing polar bear facts along with physical activity. Our administration, we, we provide a lot of instructional support for our teachers. We have a four Cs wall where students can contribute how they're utilizing the four Cs in the classroom and showcase some of their work for all to see. And then again, our student council want to continue highlighting them. In this picture right here, I, I also want to give a shout out to our co-op students. In this picture right here, I also want to give a shout out to our co-op students, some of our high school students that come to our campus because they, and it's two young ladies and they created this for us. And you'll see some of the endangered species here where they live. And so they did this for our students. And so this is really a community, a community effort. I really appreciate them for doing that. And so I think next year, without further ado, is our highlight video.
So STEM education has really enhanced the learning and the planning in our school and in the classroom. I also believe that the culture in the classroom has changed. One of the things that I really like about STEM is how inclusive it is to all students. My hopes for the future of STEM is to see it integrated in all campuses at HSL SD so that it can open up more opportunities and just doorways to our students. STEM really helps prepare students for the future and for real-world problem and solution experiences. We try to implement the four Cs, which are communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. We also make sure that we embed those deeply within our subjects, reading, language, math, and we try our best to incorporate it all as a whole. So STEM is not separate or apart from our daily lessons, but they are one in the same. We have been able, have been given the opportunity to just build a stronger foundation for our students. And I know that STEM represents science, technology, engineering, and math. But the way we have been integrating it, we have been integrating it in all four subjects. So we've been including social studies, we've been including reading. And of course, with the whole pandemic, you know, that happened, all these unfortunate times that have happened, we are moving more towards technology.
STEM is really math and science, it's all around us. I learned in STEM endangered species. The endangered species I dreamed about is polar bears and elephants. Elephants are endangered species because people are killing them just to take their tests. I want to persuade the people to stop killing their elephants. It's important because a lot of people, like sharks don't really understand that we're humans and they don't know that they're eating us. So people that are angry, they just decide to take medicine with their own hands and kill them. And it's really wrong because then that ecosystem would be really bad. I want to design a suit that divers can wear that will put transmittory on them to kind of like make the sharks go away, which sounds like they don't really like. So they'll stay away from divers and they can explore.
Well, it's been really great because we've been able to have a lot of more on-hands activities and we've come together as a family to do the projects and it just, it makes it feel like she's getting more real-world experience instead of just sitting in front of a computer or, you know, the TV all day. Tell her what you know about the polar bear.
Um, I know that their fur is not white, their fur is actually clear in the sun. Their fur looks white.
So I do, I do want to give a quick special thanks to, and I'll share this very quickly. Because nothing happens on our campus without us working together. And if I could include all of these, all of my staff on this slide, I would, because it really is a team effort. And I did have one paraprofessional who actually brought in her pet turtle to show to our kinder students since they were studying sea turtles. And so really, everybody is taking part some way, somehow, and they're taking initiative to want to do it. So really special thanks to all of these, all of these individuals who helped us in this presentation. And just thank you all for having us and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ariano. I'll open it up to the board, see if they have any questions.
Well, since I started with my list of questions, I guess I'll start. And I actually don't have really many questions after that presentation. Very, very impressed with your work at Dr. Rodriguez Elementary. I'm guessing that all of your students probably want to go to Good Dede's Middle School of Arts and Sciences now, probably. But I love that during your presentation, I believe one of your teachers said that this should be spread across in every campus in our district and I agree. You know, so many of your educators, so many of your wonderful teachers there mentioned the four Cs and the soft skills and so thank you for that. I love that it's just embedded in everything you do. I love that it's interdisciplinary approach, even when they're in the, you know, doing the physical education, other classes, they've sort of integrated. And this sort of collaborative pedagogy, this problem-driven questions and learning, this is going to be huge for the future because this is what they're going to end up doing in high schools, what they're going to do in university, and the real world, right? Everything we do is basically interdisciplinary and working in teams, even medicine is moved to that. So and then in fact, when you learn that way, there's no rote memorization, there's no drill-and-kill approach required to learn things and then test and then pass a test. You actually embed it in your synapses in your brain and you can recall it because you have this real-world sort of experiential learning experience. And so I applaud you for doing that. I will also add one more thing that I saw in there that I don't think anybody mentioned, but I think so much of, so much of what you're doing is not just STEM, but, and my other board members will agree, I know, is that it's really STEAM, right? You embed the arts. So so many folks were drawing things and being real creative in that regard. And so, going back to my Good Dede's comment, I mentioned that for a reason. I really feel that we're embedding the arts at every level in our schools, in elementary schools, in middle schools, in high schools, and rightfully so, so we can have a fully creative, fully engaged, and to your point, basically make it purposeful learning. And then that's going to lead to passion and that's going to lead to their wonderment and that's going to lead to them, you know, engaging in real-world career opportunities and things like that. So I couldn't be more proud of the work you're doing. You are an amazing, amazing principal. You know, it seems like you've been doing this for many, many, many years, but I know you're only like 22 years old, you're very young, but it seems like you've been doing this for 10 years or more. And so congratulations. I can tell the culture of your campus is just incredible, delightful learning environment and you should be very proud of all your staff and all your teachers. So congratulations and wonderful, wonderful presentation.
Thank you so much. Nothing happens without this staff, so it's all of their success, all the hard work that they do, the long hours, all the work that they put into it. It's all them, not me.
Mr. President. Go ahead, Dr. Wies.
Yeah, that's an excellent way to say it, sum it up. You know, when there's teamwork, that's where the dream work is, right? And that's what you're basically saying. And you know, everywhere I see you, I always see Ms. Jimenez, so I know that she's part of, she's an integral part of your team. So awesome job with the teamwork. And I love how you presented the vertical alignment to make it so that we can see what's happening at all grade levels. And that's important, you know? Connecting the dots to get to the why, to get to the careers, to be able to be purposeful, that's extremely powerful, extremely powerful. Taking it from one level of education, you know, of learning about something, but then taking it to the real life and doing these, you know, these virtual field trips, I think it's amazing. I mean, it's cool that you can do the polar bear training with, or learning from the scientists and they think, you know, scientists and it's fun and it's just, it's fun. And that's what you're showing us, that learning is fun and we love learning and we love to see our students learning. So excellent presentation on showing us how it's happening. And yeah, just thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wies. Alex Ranniger.
You know, I promise you, this is true. Earlier this, let's see, earlier last week, so last week, I was thinking, you know, I haven't heard anything about Discovery Education. I'm going to ask Dr. Niola to give me an update on this. Because that, this is for me, one of the most exciting curriculum modifications, enhancements that I've heard about. So here you are, I got my, I got my update and I'm sent to home. So you know, just perfect, perfect timing. And you know, when I first heard about Discovery Education, one of the things that I was just drawn to is the fact that we're teaching kids to have questions, right? To identify, like, well, what do I know? And you know, what do I care about? What's the issue? And what don't I, what could I do, possible solutions? And, but ultimately, it's to do something about that problem. So you're teaching kids that they're problem solvers from kindergarten on. And so, and that was so clear in what you showed us in your presentation, is that though your children, your students at Dr. Rodriguez Elementary are doing something about the problems that they identified. What a great generational change, right? I just, I was so excited. And it's your whole campus culture. You know, you showed us what was happening in the classrooms, but we don't even know what was happening across discussions, right? Between friend groups and thinking about, because you created the whole campus to get motivated around this issue. So anyway, a tremendous shout out to you for your leadership, your whole team, the staff, the teachers, and just the kids for jumping in, really both feet deep in, here we go. And so I can't wait for your next update, okay? Just when I think about it, then you got to know, come and give me that update, okay?
Yeah, I can't wait because year three has so many better things to come. And so we're excited, you know, to continue that partnership with Discovery Education. We really are. And part of it, really, the training has been very invaluable. But I think as part of that training is we have really found a way to make sure that extends to everyone on the campus, not just a small group of teachers. So because it's extremely important, so, and we're doing that and I think the teachers are doing that very successfully. So they're doing an awesome job.
Thank you, Dr. Ranniger. Anybody else? If not, Dr. Nola.
So we're taking it. I know that Mrs. Ariano spoke about her great staff and they truly are a tremendous staff. They've really embraced the concept of STEM and how they integrate it. But, and I may have shared this story, but as I was thinking about the staff, you know, the other critical piece is the importance of leadership. And the leadership really matters whenever you're making change at your campus. And so I've shared this story, I think, last time, but it bears repeating. I still remember two years ago, and so we were having conversations around our STEM Academy and just the interest the students had in STEM. And so, she's laughing because she knows what the story is going to be. And so we were bouncing ideas around where could we start integrating more STEM at the elementary to really move to what that, one of the teachers spoke of, of how do we build STEM across our entire district? And so we had taken a few principals to go visit some camp, some school districts where Discovery Ed was integrating their, their work. And so after that visit, we brought a number of these principals that had done the visit together because we were going to select two campuses that would begin the implementation of this whole concept. And so that particular day, Mrs. Ariano was going to be out of the, out of the campus. And so she says, wait, wait, but I don't want to knit and I want to be there. And so she's off, she was, she had a day, a personal day she had taken, but she's, no, I have to, I have to call in. This was before Zoom. And so she said, don't start anything without me, don't start any discussions. And so we had her on the phone, we had the phone there on, on the table. And so each one of them starts pitching why it should be their campus that gets selected. And so obviously, you can see that she gave a really great pitch. But it wasn't just the pitch of I want it. You can see the results of all that has been accomplished at this campus due to the leadership and, and her commitment for students. And so when we talk about transforming for global achievement, it's like, wow, you see it in action at Rodriguez. And so want to thank her, the rest of her leadership team. They've really taken this, what was just a small idea a couple of years ago and just transformed everything across their entire campus. So kudos to her, to her team, as well as the entire campus. Thank you so much for all you do for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Niola.
Thank you, Dr. Niola. And thank everybody, really, all of our board members, everybody for supporting this initiative. And this is, this is really great for kids. I know it's great for kids. We're seeing all the positive results already and so I'm, I'm so excited to continue the work. So thank you again so much.
Thank you. And you know, you talk about educating the whole student, you know, just, just from that polar bear lesson, which by the way, I'm going to go home and Google polar bears tonight. I'm not kidding.
They're not white, by the way.
That's what's going to make me Google polar bears. Just, 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 just from, you know, whether, in this case, polar bears, you know, I think it was your kinder students that made presentations, you know? And to be able to, you know, put kinder students in front of their peers and making presentations, you know, that's, you know, that's another way of, you know, kind of getting them used to, you know, you give them those skills as they grow up and they get older to feel comfortable in front of, speaking in front of crowds of their peers, you know, in front of their teachers and, you know, that's one of the parts that stood out to me, was putting them that young in front of the class to make those presentations. So overall, great presentation yourself and very proud of what you guys are doing. So thank you, thank you so much. All right, next move on to item number five, public comments for agenda topics. So yeah, do we have public comments for agenda topics?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. And item number six is public audience for non-agenda topics. Do we have a public audience?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Item number seven is approval of the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. President, I believe that we accept the consent calendar submitted.
Second motion.
A motion by Mr. Pires, second by Dr. Betis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Item number eight is matters related to transformation and school support, Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee report. Dr. Niola.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, March 2nd, we have held our regularly scheduled Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. As always, we had two topics that we brought forward. The first topic has been a recurring topic for our committee meeting and that was the topic of our teacher incentive allotment. Every month, we give an update on the progress of this initiative. This is an initiative that began, I believe, about six months ago. And so we've had a number of groups that have come together to design this process. And so for anybody that is joining us this evening via Zoom, the teacher incentive allotment is just that, it's an allotment of funds that are designed to incentivize the recruitment and retention of teachers. And so as, in order for teachers to receive this allotment of funds, there are two ways by which they can do that. One is through national board certification, which entails them going through certain classes and so forth. It's a, it's a system that they would need to go through. But the second one, and the second way that they are able to receive this allotment of funds is through a local designation system that school districts have to develop. And so it's a critical process and it's not an overnight work. It includes a lot of work that has to go on in order to identify what are those components and criteria that are going to determine the allotment of funds that teachers can receive. And so all of that work came together this, at this past meeting because at that meeting, our team presented all the various components of this local designation system. And so three of the components, the three components that were shared that will comprise this teacher incentive system was a focus on student growth, teacher observation, and additional factors. So these three items are going to be the critical pieces. And so the team came together and presented these three components and the criteria around each of these three components. Ultimately, as teachers participate, and it's a choice to participate, but when they do, they will, they may go either through that national board certification or through the local designation. the local designation system. And so each of the criteria were very specific. As teachers participate in this program, there will be an overall score that will be generated and ultimately identifying whether they will be recognized exemplary or masters. And each of those components comes with a financial incentive. So that work is underway. Our goal is to take this final product to the board for approval in April. Next month, when we meet back, we'll have one more Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee meeting that will still focus on teacher incentive allotment, and that committee meeting will look at the financial aspects of, of the program. Want to recognize our entire team across the district. We've had a number of design teams, teacher groups, a number of feedback loops in order to assist the team in, in arriving at this designation system. Want to commend a number of our senior team members, Mrs. Veronica Cortan, Dr. Joseph Villarreal, Mrs. Lori Romero, Mrs. Dahlia Garcia, and Mr. Shane Struphardt, who have been instrumental in guiding the process and getting us to where we're at. So kudos to them. Really excited at what this incentive allotment can do for our district, not only for, for bringing increased financial allotments to our staff, but more so how it will work to elevate the profession, elevate the teaching and learning that happens in our classrooms. So again, a huge thank you to that entire group. The second item that we had at our meeting was a discussion around calendar, school calendars. Specifically, we talked about next year's school calendar. And so we recognize the impact that COVID had, has had on our school system this last year. And we also know that we may see some, some achievement gaps that will come as a result of our students being at home and just the, the impact that this whole pandemic has had. And so when we talk about how do we close those gaps, how do we meet the individual needs of all students, one of the, the topics for discussion with regard to next year's calendar was the inclusion of innovative days. And so innovative days is a new concept, but it's really days that we built into the calendar for next year that will be utilized just for that purpose, meeting the individual needs of students. Whether it's closing gaps for students or accelerating instruction for those that are ready to move ahead, providing opportunities for students to engage, for parents to engage, opportunities to really meet the social emotional needs of students. So a, a very purpose that can happen with these innovative days. And so we're really excited at that adjustment to our calendar, because we think it's those types of things that really will create meaningful impacts on our students. We also took an opportunity to look at this year's calendar. And so as we prepare for next year, and how do we find or maximize time to get ready for that process, one of the, the discussions we had was regarding finishing our school year a little bit earlier, thereby giving our teaching staff time to work together to plan, to really look at where our students are and plan for those innovative days, plan for what the next school year will look like. And so both of those items, actually, today, the calendar for next year, as well as potential changes to the calendar for this year, will be coming up later in our agenda for, for board consideration and approval. Huge thank you again in that area, because we had a lot of people that came together and really researched, how do we maximize, how do we really utilize our calendars with purpose? All of us know that our calendar, the calendar that we currently have is due to the flexibility that we have with District of Innovation. And so we're really maximizing that opportunity to look at how we utilize the tools that we have in order to impact our students and impact their individual needs. So great, great work that is happening here as we get ready for next year. So I want to go ahead and turn, turn it over to Dr. Reiniger, who chairs our committee.
Thank you, Dr. Niola. You know, the, the, thank you for the summaries and, and to the whole team on the teaching and teacher incentive allotment and the summary you gave on that. The, the reality is that this teacher incentive allotment truly has the, the potential, the power to transform our district by making sure that there's a culture of, of improvement and, and striving for this, you know, exemplary mastery level of teaching and, and financially incentivizing that, but ultimately giving teachers who really love teaching, giving them the opportunity to stay in the classroom, but be financially incentivized for doing so. What better way for our students to master topics, learn, learn who they want to be, you know, find the professions that they care most deeply about from our very best teachers? So this is an incredible amount of work. This will work for our district because it's been designed so thoughtfully, and the metrics have been thought through so carefully. The fairness, the justice, all of this, it has to be in place in order for this to truly work, and it's there. So we are, we as a, as a group are really confident in this. And I, I want to extend my, my congratulations and my, and all of us, I know, I want to thank the, the senior team and every single design team member who's been a part of this. Huge lift. It feels like a really short amount of time. It's, it's gone fast, but it's, it's very detailed. And then on the school calendar, on both fronts, I think the main message is that HCISD is not scared to do things differently when it makes a difference for our kids, right? If we can finish school meeting all the requirements, we're not cutting any requirements, but if we can finish a little bit early, and we can give our teachers and our staff time to plan so that enhances next year's instruction, then we're going to do it. And we're going to think about how to build in these innovative days, because it's going to matter for our students. And so I just want to commend the district for realizing the power that we have to make best decisions for our students.
Mr. President, just want to say thank you to our chair and just to her comments. That was a great summary, and I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benes. Thank you, Dr. Reiniger and Dr. Niola. Move on to item number nine, matters related to curriculum and instruction. Item 9A is the approval of amendment of the 2020-2021 school district calendar. Ms. Veronica Cortan.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Niola, senior team, and audience. I am here this evening to share with you an amendment to the 2021 school district calendar. As Dr. Niola and Dr. Reiniger mentioned, last week, we had a chance to talk a little bit about this amendment. So as we get ready for next year, we are coming forward to our board this evening to ask for an amendment, for a one-week amendment to our calendar. Currently, our students' last day would be June 18th, and we are asking for the board to consider that that, the academic calendar would actually end one week earlier on June the 11th. I do want to point out that contractual responsibilities will still be kept with our teachers and with our campus personnel, as we look forward to having that week of reflection, time to look at our data, review, and certainly begin to be proactive of how, of how we're going to prepare for next year. And so this, that one week will give us time to work with our campus personnel as we prepare for differentiated instruction and really to get ready for next year and everything that that will bring. So at this time, the administration recommends approval of the proposed calendar amendment as presented by administration.
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion for approval of the amendment of the 2021 school district calendar as presented.
Second?
A motion by Dr. Mies and a second by Dr. Reiniger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 9B is the approval of adoption of the 2021-2022 school district calendar. Ms. Cortan.
Board president, board members, Dr. Niola, senior team, and audience. I do want to talk a little bit about this upcoming year's calendar. As you know, we're here tonight to, one of the items that we'll be looking at is our academic calendar for the 21-22 school year. And so as we look at the calendar, I do want to point out that we had three options that we took forward to all of our campus personnel. Our, in our district, our campus personnel are the ones that will actually vote for that calendar, as it impacts their work quite a bit. So with those three options, this evening, we are here tonight to bring forward the option that did get the highest number of votes in total. I do want to say I'm really proud of our campuses, particularly working with our principals, because they always do such a great job ensuring that everybody has a voice at the table. So with our calendar voting this year, we had 1,502 votes for our calendar, which is a great number. Of those 1,500-plus votes, 652 were for option three, which is the option that we're bringing forward this evening for our, for our board to consider for adoption for next year. So a couple of highlights about our, our calendar that we're bringing forward. The start date for teachers would be August the 9th, and the end date for them would, for our teachers would be May 28th. Start date for students is August 16th, and they would be concluding their academic year on May 27th. We do have three two-day increments of something that we're calling innovative days, and I believe Dr. Reiniger spoke to, to that as well as Dr. Niola. And so with these innovative days, they're just that. That, get those two days, we will give our campuses permission to rethink the scheduling for that day. The intention of our innovative days is to bring something very different for how we're going to close gaps, not just achievement gaps, but as you look forward, and as you look at our data right now, and as you look forward to next year, we realize that there's going to be room for things like acceleration. You consider TSI, AP testing, and things of that nature. But there's also a gap that we know we're going to have to prepare for, and that's a social emotional gap. So our innovative days will allow us permission to do things differently on those days, scheduling will look differently. And so we'll be working with our assistant superintendents for elementary and secondary education to plan those along with campus principals. The other thing is that our professional development days, once again, have been strategically placed. If you look in the fall and the spring, we have time to learn with our, with our district and make sure that we're at the top of our game with professional learning. Our culture has really embraced the week-long Thanksgiving holiday, and so our calendar for next year does call for that, as well as Good Friday and Easter Monday. And then lastly, I'll just say that our calendar would conclude prior to Memorial Day. And so with that, I would like to pause and bring you forward a recommendation that the board consider and approve option three for our academic calendar for the 21-22 school
Mr. President, I'd like to move approval of the adoption of the 2021-2022 school district calendar as presented.
Second?
A motion by Dr. Reiniger and a second by Mr. Powers. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 9C is the approval of professional services agreement understanding between Teach for America and Harlingen CISD. Ms. Cortan.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Niola, senior team, and audience. I'm coming forward this evening with the professional services agreement between Teach for America and Harlingen CISD. This has been a longstanding partnership, a successful longstanding partnership. And so as we look forward to next year, we are coming to the board with a, a services agreement that would actually be a three-year span. And within that three-year span, we are looking to place approximately three teachers in our schools from Teach for America. And those three teachers, that would incur, would incur a cost of $6,000 per teacher. And those $6,000 in the agreement go, are devoted to professional learning, and a lot of the services that Teach for America provides for our teachers that come from that organization. At this time, board, we are proposing the approval of the agreement of professional services as presented for Teach for America and Harlingen CISD.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would like to move approval of Teach for America agreement as presented by staff.
Second motion. We have a motion by Ms. Frey and a second by Dr. Mies. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 9D is the approval of CPR instructional requirements waiver. Ms. Cortan.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Niola, senior team, and audience. We are coming forward tonight with the consideration and hopeful approval of a CPR instruction requirements waiver. As you know, before graduation, all of our students must have at least once, must receive CPR instruction. As you can imagine, last year and this year have been pretty challenging to complete CPR instruction. We do have, we do start that at the ninth grade level, so we can prepare for the 12th grade year. However, we're coming forward this evening to ask for consideration and possible approval for this waiver, as we get ready for our graduating class here in the next couple of months. Administration recommends approval of the submission of the CPR waiver as presented.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the CPR instruction requirements waiver as presented. Second?
We have a motion by Dr. Mies and a second by Mr. Powers. Any further discussion?
May I ask a question, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what percentage of students do you think the waiver will cover or whatever?
Sure, so I visited with, with Coach Solodio, and he leads that for us, and he is estimating between 1% and 2% at the maximum. And so he has, like I said, we, we start that at the ninth grade level, and so we usually get everybody taken care of, but there is a small population, whether they didn't have a chance to do it their freshman year, or they may have moved into the district later. And so it'll be between 1% and 2% that, that Coach Solodio is projecting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Great question. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 9E is the approval of the submission of the educator appraisal waiver request to the Texas Education Agency. Ms. Cortan.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Niola, senior team, and audience. I am coming forward this evening with the consideration and recommendation for the board to approve the submission of the educator appraisal waiver request by TEA. I'm coming forward to ask for the, this waiver to be submitted. I do want to talk a little bit about this. So every year, our teachers are required to have an annual evaluation. It's comprised of about a 45-minute time segment, and that's somewhere within the academic year. Towards the end of the year, our appraisers go in and complete a summative evaluation. Because we are so far along in the completion of our annual observations, we are not wanting to waive that, that annual observation, but instead waive the summative conference at the end of the year. And so as we look forward to next year, we've, we've talked about teacher incentive allotment quite a bit, and we need to, we need to ensure that we have our annual observations on file so that we can look at goal setting and things of that nature. So this waiver essentially for our district would be just a summative conference with our, our appraisers and their evaluators. I do want to talk a little bit about T-PES. So T-Tests is for our teachers, and T-PES is for our principals. And so Dr. Villarreal and Mrs. Romero do T-PES. We are coming forward to ask for the waiver for that as well, because there's a component in there that also relates to student data. However, our experienced leadership, our leadership definition that we built with Holdsworth is a great way for us to prepare our system for next year. And so while we will not be possibly having an appraisal at the T-PES, we will have an end-of-the-year conversation with our, all of our principals based around our experienced leadership. And so board, at this time, the administration recommends the board approve the submission of the educator appraisal waiver requested to the Texas Education Agency. And that you authorize the superintendent or her designated to make the online submission and take any other actions as may be necessary to finalize the waiver submission.
Mr. President, we move approval of submission of the education appraisal waiver requested of TEA as presented.
Second?
We have a motion by Dr. Benes and a second by Dr. Reiniger. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, just want to congratulate Ms. Cortan and the course Dr. Niola and senior team for, for at least continuing the work that we can continue, given the circumstances, because it is very important that we continue to measure what's important and to continue to align ourselves with accountability and, and obviously to do it all for, for, for the, for the students, right? And so I, I appreciate now in the context here that we're going to do what we can, because the work is very, very the work is very, very important. And I know it's difficult with the circumstances, but it seems like this is the best, the best thing we're doing this time with, given the situation. And so thank you for doing that. It's easy just to say, okay, great, this is a way we can get out of doing something. But we're doing the important work, because we know that the kids are waiting for us to get it right. And we do get it right at Harlingen all the time. So thank you for that, and it matters greatly to this Board that we're always putting our best and leading by example from our leaders. And that's going to affect every classroom and every student. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Pettis. So Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 9F is the approval of amendment of the District of Innovation Designation Plan. Ms. Cortan.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Neola, senior team, and audience. I promise you, you're going to start playing the music after this one. This is my last one. So this last item is actually the approval of the amendment of our District of Innovation Designation Plan. So really, really proud to say that we were one of the earliest adopters, one of the early adopters, of this whole idea of District of Innovation. And so when we came forward as a District of Innovation, as I mentioned, we were an early adopter. And so the Texas Education Code looked a little bit different at that time. And so last month, when we came forward, we brought our District of Innovation Plan to our Board for review. And at that time, you approved that. We've been working with TEA, and under their guidance and their recommendation, they are recommending that we change one of the codes that we had in our District of Innovation Plan. And so we would be going from 21.055 to 21.003. And that would really align to the spirit of the whole intention of the District of Innovation. It doesn't change really any of the intent or the verbiage in our plan, it just changes the Texas Education Code number. And so at this time, we are recommending that the Board consider the approval for the amendment of the District of Innovation Designation Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of the amendment of District of Innovation Designation Plan as presented.
A second.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Dr. Reiniger, and a second by Dr. Menez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cortan. And before we move on to item number 10, I'm going to call for a quick five-minute recess. Thank you for that recess. We'll move on to item number 10, matters relating to business services. Item 10A is a presentation by financial advisor on Series 2021 refunding bonds for interest savings. Mr. Julio Cavassos.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman, and Dr. Neola, board members. Item 10 is a presentation by our financial advisors, Dr. Miguel Ros Santos and Bobby Villarreal from Harlingen, Georgia. We have a opportunity to refund some bonds and save some money. So Dr. Ros Santos is going to give a short presentation on that. I think he should be on Zoom. Dr. Ros Santos?
I am, I am on Zoom. I don't see myself. I don't know if I'm on video or not, but I don't know. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We just can't see you.
Is my video?
Yeah. If you have the presentation, and then we can share it over here, Dr. Ros Santos.
Okay, if you would, if you would, I would appreciate that.
Sure. Go ahead and share that presentation.
Let me get that easier. Just as a reminder to the Board, there you go. Just as a reminder to the Board, Mr. Bobby Villarreal presented to the Board on January the 26th, the possibility of this refunding. And today, we're bringing it to you one more time very briefly. And it'll be followed by an order presented by bond counsel. But if the Board approves that order, then in essence, you're authorizing us to move forward with the presentation. You'll notice on this page, the yellow, the yellow highlight here, the $6,615,000 is what you are refunding. And if you'll notice, at the end of that line, where it says 8/15/2021, those bonds are callable on 8/15/2021. Now, we're moving on it right now, because these are considered currently callable bonds, and they can be called 90 days prior to the call date. So that will be May the 15th of 2021. So taking action today, if the Board chooses to move forward, about five or six weeks, we will be looking at, hoping that the market is right, and sell the bonds, and then another 30 days or so to close, which would be on or about 8/15, a little bit after 8/15, I mean, 5/15, May the 15th, which would be 90 days within the 8/15/21. The other one, there's a lot of information here that I may not go over, and all it has to do with your debt, your principal, how it's been retired over the years, and so on. The next most important page, we can skip page two, we'll go to page three, which is a summary page. In the summary page, we have, we put two columns here, because what Bobby presented to you the last time is the last column, which the last column was based, if you go down towards the second line from the bottom, where it says rates as of, the rates that he presented to you on the 26th were rates of January the 4th, 2021. And notice that on that date, right above that, where it says 1/4/2021, the rates were under 1%. They were actually .9. And the column to the left is the numbers that we're presenting to you today, second line from the bottom, on March 1st of 2021. And right above that, the interest rates on that day were 1.345. So you'll see that the interest rates went up almost half a point. Now, today, I didn't have the exact rates, because we weren't doing any underwritings of this nature, but the desk in Dallas tells me that probably that 1.345 is now closer to probably 1.45. So the reasons that this is happening is, of course, what's happening in Washington with the, with the $1.9 trillion impetus that's coming in from Congress. There's a lot, anticipated a lot of money getting into people's hands. That money's going to be spent. Major spending like that causes inflation, and inflation causes rates to go up. The other, the other part of the summary is that after a stimulus goes out, and people receive it and spend it and so on, the next major thing that's going to be happening in Washington is infrastructure. And infrastructure across the country is supported by both parties. So we see more money being put into the economy, and probably, probably interest rates continuing to rise. Now, with that, all of that said, well, you'll notice, I'm just, I'll just take you to that shaded area on this particular plate, where it says future value savings, and NPV, and so on and so forth. Notice that where it says percent of savings of refunding bonds, refunded bonds, two months ago, or almost two months ago, you were saving 15%, meaning on the 12 years that you have left on these bonds, if you continue to pay it away, that you're paying right now, you would have paid 15% more. The savings on 3/1/21 went down to 12% of what you're refunding. And chances are that we'll probably be seeing them go down even further. Now, in the order that's going to follow this presentation that I'm making, I believe Matt Lee may be on the line from your bond counsel. He is going to present some parameters for the Board to approve. The parameters, we suggested to them, they're not in concrete, but we suggested that we consider selling these bonds as long as the interest rate was 2% or below, giving ourselves a little flexibility. That the savings be at least 5%. And that's generally when districts can save, 5%, 6% of the refunded bonds at 15, that 16 and 13 that I just showed you, when it's 5% or 6%, generally in the market, it's something that financial advisors will recommend to their clients. And also in the order, a pair of the parameters, the Board would, in essence, authorize superintendent and business manager to pull the trigger. If the market is right, and we see that your savings are within the parameters, or the parameters that you established tonight, then the underwriters won't give you about 24 hours. So there's no time to call a board meeting. So in essence, you would be authorizing the superintendent and the business manager by passing the order to pull the trigger. And then, of course, we would come back to you after all is said and done to give you an explanation of what it is that happened. Kind of like the first presentation that Bobby Villarreal did for you the last time, when he did a summary of the bonds that we financed in 2020. Any questions? I'd be happy to take a shot at them. This is not an action item. Simply report, the action item is the order that's following my presentation, being presented by bond counsel. And then, if the Board chooses to approve the order, then what I just presented, we begin to move on it.
And as Dr. Ros Santos mentioned, Bobby Villarreal gave a brief presentation about this in our January board meeting. Even at 12% savings, you know, that's still good savings for the school district. Again, the order does have a 5% floor. So if it goes below the 5%, then, you know, we wouldn't move forward on the sale. It does have those parameters. You know, we feel it's an opportune time to move forward and try to sell and refund these bonds.
Mr. President, I assume the next item, so we can hear those parameters, and then maybe we can discuss once we have more information.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10B, consideration and approval of an order authorizing the issuance by the Harlingen CISD of its unlimited tax refunding bonds, Series 2021, levying a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of the bonds, delegating the authority to certain members of the Board, of trustees, and district staff to execute certain documents relating to the sale of the bonds and other matters, incident and related thereto. Mr. Julio Cavassos.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman, and Dr. Neola, board members. Item 10B is the order authorizing the district to move forward in the refunding of the bonds, and allowing Dr. Neola and myself to execute certain documents relating to the sale of the bonds. We have been working with our bond counsel and the financial advisors in drafting this order. I think, Shane, you were going to bring it up. So this is the actual order, and we actually do have Matt Lee from our bond counsel. Matt, if you want to give a couple of words on the order, we took a similar order last year, where we refunded the $72 million. So it's similar to that. So I'm going to let Matt say a couple of things. Matt?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Matt Lee. Hello. Thank you all for allowing me to represent the district again. This is the same process that the district and the Board adopted last year, as Mr. Cavassos just mentioned, the refunding of the, of the batch. I think there's some other bonds that were done last year. So what this order does is, within these parameters that are shown on your screen, it delegates the sale to a later date. And Dr. Ros Santos said we're looking sometime in the mid-April timeframe. But it basically authorizes Mr. Cavassos and Dr. Neola to act within these parameters. So for several reasons, we can't exceed that $6.1 million figure. So that's, that is what that is. For several reasons, we can't extend the maturity of the bonds that are being refunded. So the August 15th, 2031, is the maximum date. The third and fourth parameters, as Dr. Ros Santos went into in a little more detail, provides that the maximum interest rate won't exceed 2%. And I believe the presentation showed that we're up to about 1.3 at the moment. And then the last parameter is, there must be at least 5% savings. And right now, on that presentation, I believe we're close to about 12% savings at this moment. So what these parameters do is, or what they do is allow the Board to say, as of today, assuming you, the Board, adopt this order, it allows Mr. Cavassos and Dr. Neola to work with Dr. Ros Santos and his team, and myself as bond counsel, to at a later date, market these bonds and get them sold, as long as those bonds fit within these four parameters that the Board is considering and approving today. And I'm happy to walk through. Any further questions, what my role is from here on out, et cetera, if anyone has any questions.
President?
Yes, sir. Dr. Pettis.
I move for approval of an order authorizing the issuance of the Harlingen CISD of its unlimited tax refunding bonds, Series 2021, levying a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of the bonds, delegating the authority to certain members of the Board, of trustees, and the district staff to execute certain documents related to the sale of bonds and other matters, incident and related thereto.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Pettis, and a second by Dr. Menez. Any further discussion?
Do we need to specifically specify Dr. Neola, Julio, in this motion?
I think it was part of the presentation, unless, Julio, do we need to discuss?
No, it's part of the order, you know, allowing the superintendent or designee to execute certain documents.
Thank you.
I do want to point out that Matt's is Ken Lee's son.
Oh, wow. We should have, we should have mentioned that conflict before now on. Nice to meet you, Matt. Please say hello.
Likewise. I'm a district.
Good to see you again, Matt.
Hey, Dr. Menez, I'm sorry for all the documents you're going to have to sign. You've got to hydrate before you start.
You know it. I'm always doing that. Come on.
All right. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Julio, and, man, Dr. Ros Santos. Move on to item number 10C, the appointment of election judges and alternate judges. Mr. Julio Cavassos.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman, and Dr. Neola, board members. Item 10C is the appointment of election judges and alternate judges for the upcoming election. You know, you do have the list there in front of you, Shane sharing. We have used most of these individuals before, and as we do it prior to every election, we are going to conduct election training just as a refresher for the judges. We recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Powers, and a second by Dr. Reiniger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10D is the approval of election workers and officials. Mr. Cavassos.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman, and Dr. Neola, board members. Item 10D is the approval of the election workers. All of these individuals work in my department, and we include Lupita Cruz, my previous secretary. She's going to be helping out with some early voting as well. We included her in this list. And again, we have used all of these individuals before in the past, and we will conduct some training as well. We recommend approval.
Make a motion for approval.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Delio?
Second motion.
Second by Dr. Pettis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10E, approval of compensation schedule for election workers.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman, and Dr. Neola, board members. Item 10E is approval of compensation for the election day workers. We're recommending the election judges be paid $15 an hour plus $25 for delivery of the election materials. Alternate judges, $14 per hour, and the clerks, $13 per hour. This is in line to what the City of Harlingen is paying, you know, the clerks as well. We do recommend approval.
I move for approval as recommended by staff.
Second.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Powers, and a second by Dr. Reiniger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Cavassos.
Thank you.
Item 11, matters relating to human services. Item 11A is the approval of recommended revisions to policy update 116 on second reading. Ms. Debbie Skogg.
Mr. Hyman, Dr. Neola, members of the Board, senior team, and audience. The recommended local policy revisions to update 116 include the dismissal appeal process for employees, cybersecurity training, student medical treatment, and community conduct on school premises. Administration recommends approval of the revisions to policy update 116 on second reading.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second. Second.
A motion by Ms. Fleury and a second by Dr. Reiniger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Scoggan.
Thank you.
Item 12, matters relating to district operations. 12A, approval of contingency betterment fund change order number one for the ETRGV ECHS project. Mr. Oscar Tapia.
Board President Jaimez, members of the board, Dr. Neola and colleagues. This item is a contingency betterment fund change for the UTRGV Early College High School project. It's change order number one. We did discuss this change order at the facilities committee meeting in more detail. Would like to make one change. We put $83,560 as the amount not to exceed, but we did take one item out, which was a big item. It had to do with air conditioning changes to the elevator mechanical room. And we thought the price was a little high in reviewing it with the engineer. He felt he could probably make some revisions to try to get a better price. So we took that one out. So the betterment amount changes to $56,0274. So that's a $27,000 reduction. Hopefully, we can bring a lot better price on the next one, on the next AC change. So this $56,000 has to do with some sanitary, sanitary sewer line, waterline changes underground, capping some existing water and sewer services that was there from the previous subdivision. There was like 10 or 12 lots. They all had their own connections. They all had to be capped off as per the Water Board. We had some kitchen flooring changes, some foundation and pier changes having to do with the structure underneath the learning stair, and some steel structure up on top of the higher areas that the engineer saw some conflicts, and some electrical power changes to a couple of areas, and changing steel painted handrails to aluminum handrails. So I recommend, and the project architect recommends, approval of the change order for $56,0274.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion-
Mr. President, I need to abstain from a discussion and voting on this matter, please.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for approval of contingency betterment fund change order number one as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Muniz and a second by Mr. Powers. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We want to know. Dr. Pettis said abstain from the vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 12B is facilities committee report by Mr. Oscar Tapia.
Yes, again, thank you, Board President Jaimez, members of the board, Dr. Neola and colleagues. On March 2nd, we had a facilities committee meeting. I gave an update first on the damage that was done to the Vernon Middle School choir band hall on the fire that we had over the holidays. We discussed the contractor that's been hired, Noble Construction, working with the insurance adjusters to see the content, what is damaged, what's not, and what can be saved. And so we got a detailed report on that. And the contractor has started to do the asbestos abatement work a couple of days ago. We also gave an update on the TRE projects. The Treasure Hills Elementary Phase 2 is about 60% complete. They've poured all the slabs. They're starting to do steel structure up and some steel beams as well. The school entry vestibules, which is Wilson, Dishman, and Rodriguez Elementary Schools, everything was set up to start demolition work here during the spring break week. So that's going to start next week. The Early College High School is about 60% complete. All interior work, you know, HVAC, electrical, mechanical, all that's ongoing. They're starting to sheet rock on the inside, and there's one section left that they have to do some roofing. And they started the brickwork on the west wall as well. And the Transition Academy is about 90% complete. That one, all the exterior is complete. They're starting to do finish work inside with tile work, cabinets, and then finish work. And then we're starting the landscaping work on the outside. The Gutierrez Fine Arts, that contract was signed, contractor's mobilized. He submitted some submittal documents to order the materials that were specified, which have been approved. So we're just waiting for the materials to come in so we can start construction there. And the baseball softball fields, the nets and the poles are up, the padding on the half walls are up, and the sodgrass has been completed after the site was graded. So they're actually playing on those fields as we speak. So we've just got some minor punch to these items left. Then presented the change order that we just talked about right now, and we closed off with Mr. Raymond and those that give an update on the construction financial report. So that was pretty much it. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our facilities chair, Mr. Edred Powers.
Only comments is, I mean, everything is moving along as planned. Weather's holding up fairly well, except for our freeze. Just Oscar briefly, we didn't have hardly any damage, did we, to our facilities because of the freeze?
We had mainly waterline breaks in few areas, especially the exterior with the backflow preventers. We did have three large AC units that had some coil damage due to the freeze. So we're replacing some units at, I think there was one big unit over in Wing C at Connell Academy, one at Jefferson Elementary, and I think Long Elementary, some small units. So overall, all the damages and labor worth $75,000 to $100,000 overall damage. So we took care of that in-house.
That's great. I mean, that's great that we're able to do that in-house and a quick response. It could have been a lot worse. So thank you very much for you and your staff in responding so quickly. The Treasure Hills is looking great. I know you all run into some problems over there with some of the structures that were underground that no one knew about, and you all have responded great on that also. The, I'm excited about the school vegetables at Rodriguez, Wilson, and Dishman. These will be the first ones that we're going to be constructing for the safety of our staff and our students, and it's going to be a great improvement. Transition Academy, it just looks great. I drove by it this weekend, and it's, when will we be in there? Do you know?
Probably end of April.
So will we start using it this year, or?
We'll see. Especially our department needs to see what, who can go out there later this year or wait till next year. We haven't decided yet.
It looks terrific. It's going to be a real asset for our district and our community. So, and the baseball fields are being used and just look terrific. And again, thank you for you and your staff and the quick response and the hard work you all do. We really do appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And thank you, Oscar. We'll move on to item number 13, complete and submit ballot for Region One Education Service Center board elections. We've handed out ballots to all the trustees and just fill them out and pass them back.
Make sure you sign it at the bottom, Greg.
Thank you. Okay, we're good. We'll move on to item number 14, is adjournment to closed or executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.082, the Open Meetings Act, for the following purposes. Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding legal issues pertaining to employees' grievance and appeal. Pursuant, item B pursuant to Sections 551.074, the Texas Government Code, consider, discuss, and conduct Level 4 policy DGBA grievance hearings by employees, OB, MM, IS, JL, DP, JD, AM, YZ, JE, VO, SH, ZQ, JW, JL, RE, AA. Item 14C, discuss employment of teachers and other professional staff. And item D, discuss approval of Harrington CSD administrators' contracts for 2021, 2022. We are now in executive session. We are back, and we are live. We are now reconvened into open session for matters discussed in closed section. Item B pursuant to Sections 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, consider, discuss, and conduct Level 4 policy DGBA grievance hearings by employees, OB, MM, IS, JL, DP, JD, AM, YZ, JE, VO, SH, ZQ, JW, JL, RE, and AA.
Mr. President? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. President, I move to uphold the decision at Level 3 by administration, and direct administration to initiate plans for a comprehensive salary study for all employees of the district that reflects the concerns of these grievance as would best serve all of our employees.
I have a motion by Dr. Pettis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Powers. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 14C, discuss employment of teachers and other professional staff.
Mr. President, I move for approval as discussed in executive session.
I have a motion by Dr. Pettis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Powers. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 14D, discuss approval of Harrington CSD administrators' contracts for 2021, 2022.
Mr. President, I move that the board employ administrators as recommended by administration under a one-year probationary, one-year, and two-year term contracts through the end of the 2021, 2022 school year. And I further authorize the board president to execute employment contracts to the employees accepting the offer.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Reiniger and a second by Dr. Muniz. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And that, we are adjourned.